So I'm sure that you all can see, I just reached out to Sarah Gold. I just want to let everybody know they're having some tech issues at the library. I think it's self-explanatory at this point. But it seems like it's an issue with feedback and every time they turn the audio on, it's that high pitched noise we're hearing. So they're working to figure that out and to get it working. And then we appreciate everybody's patience.
If our voice is carrying. Sarah Fox, can you hear me?
Yeah, you have an echo, but I can hear you. It's not that shrieking noise anymore.
There is still an echo.
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Sounds a little like we're at Fenway Park.
All right, what about now?
Less.
Is it better now?
No, you keep hearing that.
Okay, hold on.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sarah Fox, without an echo?
Little echo, but I can understand what you're saying.
Okay, it's better than what it was, okay?
Oh yeah, yeah. It's not that before it was a very, it was like the microphone feedback shriek.
Okay.
The microphone shriek comes a little bit when you come up and you seem more distant.
You guys are just gonna have to speak loud.
I wonder if moving forward using headsets might be helpful.
Yeah, we're gonna have to test it back out because we tested that. We had tested that out at the beginning and it had feedback, but everything has feedback at this point. And I know there's a way to do this, so we will carry on.
Persevere.
Yes. All right. I will call us to order at 7:10. Does anybody have any commendations?
Do I have to unmute myself?
Nope, you do not have to unmute yourself to comment.
So I just want to give commendations on the mural project and the student art submissions that are part of that work. Particular shout out to Mrs. DeMoor and Mrs. H for coordinating that. There will be a wonderful slideshow of the student artwork and their ideas for the mural project in the superintendent's weekly update. But the volume of work and the student art submissions, I thought were worthy of a commendation tonight. Thank you to Cindy Cooper also for sharing that out.
I can't wait to see it. All right, Sarah Fox, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, I wanted to give a commendation to some of the high school students. There's a group that are working, I believe in smaller teams, maybe two students to a team or more, to connect with those younger grades and provide some opportunities for after-school programs. One of my kids got involved in one today or thought she was getting involved in one, got looped into another. I didn't even know there were this many options. I'm just so pleased to see so many high school kids volunteering their time, connecting with these younger kids, really giving them a mentor and a connection piece in a time that, you know, they often feel lonely. I just think it speaks to the high level of, the high caliber of, you know, integrity and everything else we see in our high school students. So I wanted to appreciate all the programs. I think there's multiple ones going on right now that are connecting those younger and older students. And I wanted to mention it.
Wonderful. Thanks for pointing that out. All right, Mandy, I'm sorry, I skipped over you. I'm a little discombobulated right now. So I will now turn it over to you for commendations from the Village School.
Thank you, and no problem. Thanks for having me here this evening. It's always a great opportunity to be able to speak about good things that are happening at Village. You know, my first shout out I want to throw out there is to our fabulous nurses. They really are the heroes of this year, fielding constant questions from myself and teachers and parents, and sometimes making really hard phone calls that people do not want to hear, while adhering to the rules and following things closely and making sure that we can continue with in-person learning. So they've been a crucial part of making us successful this year, as well as our front office staff. We've been short-staffed this week even, and they come in with calm demeanors and smiles, greeting and making everyone feel comfortable every day. And, you know, it's no secret that they're really the ones running the school here. So they've been, both of those partnerships are really great. This year and last year, we've had the third grade here, and I've gotten to know the third grade teachers quite a bit recently and working with them closer. And they're just an amazing group of educators. They came from two different schools, as we all know, and they've come together as a strong team collaborating with each other. And I've really seen them rise to the occasion with challenges recently and overcome those and provide fun and engaging learning experiences for the students. So it's been really excellent to work with them and we're lucky to have them here with us. So shout out to the third grade teachers. The whole team of third grade is pretty amazing. And our fourth grade, if we were to come into the school right now, we're in the middle of a botanical garden display. So the fourth grade teachers have been working in science class. I popped into one classroom today and the students were working on presentations. And so I got to hear a little bit about what they were doing. And so it was great. I think the students were a little nervous when I walked in and then became really brave and told me all about their exciting projects. So that was wonderful. And yesterday I was actually in a fifth grade class because I was about to cover it. And one of the students was giving a presentation there on the water cycle. And I asked, I said, you know, I'm speaking at school committee tomorrow night. I'd love to share your project. Kind of sent her into a panic, so I did not want to share that. But the fabulous work, the voice that this student had while she was reading her water cycle project as she was writing a Dear Diary entry and sharing all about the unit that they had just finished. It was fantastic. Sixth grade Nan Murphy and Rebecca Brand and myself have been working closely with the ELA teachers as they continue to collaborate with each other. And we've seen them come together as a strong team focused on student learning and coming together to look at rubrics and focus on what's best for students. So they have been doing an excellent job and working together to ensure all students are successful in their upcoming writing unit and social studies as well. We all know we're lacking in substitutes, and this is not meant to be a negative comment. So I just want to preface that. I actually ended up subbing in a fifth grade classroom last week for an ELA teacher. And my emails were ignored, my phone calls and other crisis had to wait. And it was honestly the best thing ever. What I loved about this is the students knew the plan, they knew the routine, they knew what was expected. Another teacher came in to help me set up the lesson because the fifth grade teachers have been working really closely, collaborating to make sure that their pacing is on with each other. And it was just, it was a really great day. It just reminded me of why we're all here. So that was really pretty, pretty great to ignore all the other stuff and focus on what's really important and why we're all here in these meetings and why we're all here in the school. So I told the teacher I may steal her class from time to time because I have a good day. We've got upcoming enrichment, thanks to our awesome PTO. So students in grades three, four, five and six next week are going to be learning about internet safety at age-appropriate presentations. And so we're excited about that with a parent night as well. And, you know, Village tomorrow's Friday. We have been calling Thursdays Friday Junior. So we're looking forward to another successful week next week. And everyone's really doing a fabulous job here at Village. So it's always nice to be able to give a shout out to all of the grade levels and department areas here at Village. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak about Village this evening.
Thank you for joining us. It's always great to hear everything going on at that building level, so we appreciate it.
All my kids call it Friday Junior now, and they tell me that it's allowed because Ms. Murphy said so.
I kind of like that term.
I just go with it, I'm like, sure. That means I'm not cooking today either.
Did you have anything, Emily? Sorry that I skipped over you.
So we were sent an article that was in the newspaper, and so I wanted to...
We can hear you, Emily.
Okay. I just wanted to commend Brian Whalen, Denise Moretto, Principal, Matt Fox and Eric Oxford, the UTAM family and Miles. I'm not sure if everyone saw the article, but what they're doing over at Vets is pretty amazing. And I think that they deserve some great recognition for that. And it made me truly proud to be a part of this district and this committee that we are able to help and work with this family because they have a special place in my heart. So it made me so happy. So thank you to everybody.
I just want to, could I really quickly add to something Mandy said? When she talked about, you know, the teachers at Village and that third grade team, last week, on a Friday, they gave a lesson on bridges. And I just want to say, all my kids for three hours that night spent the night building bridges. You figure Friday at the end of the week, these kids would be done with school. But the teachers made it so exciting that my kitchen table became overtaken. And the older ones were teaching the younger ones. And it really hit home the lesson and made it fun. And I, as parents, appreciate that so much from that team.
Great, thanks for sharing that. All right, Dan Howells, are you with us this evening?
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Good evening, Dan.
Hello. So tomorrow marks the last day of quarter two at the high school. It's hard to believe that we're, you know, at least in terms of the schedule halfway through the year. I'm not sure if it's mathematically that way, but hard to believe. So this week after Martin Luther King Day, we would normally be having midterms, but they were called off this year, which I think is appreciated by, you know, students and staff. From scheduling to just kind of the fairness of having such big exams when we're not in school as much as we normally are. It just, I don't think it would have worked out as well. So I think it was a good choice to not have them this year. The National Green School Society is hosting a clothing swap tomorrow. Students donated used clothing that will be sold in the MHS back courtyard for a dollar apiece. And again, that is, so tomorrow, January 22nd, at the MHS back courtyard from 3:00 to 5:00. Earlier, just earlier this night, there was an informational meeting for, about senior projects. So both virtual and in-person internships will be supported by the high school, which is very exciting. You know, we're all glad to have, you know, something so special, and especially at the end of the year, big wrap-up. We're glad to have that. Also, just a couple nights ago, the juniors had their class seminar where they talked about the beginnings of the college application process, which again, hard to believe that it's, you know, so soon, but it's here. And finally, You're in Town, the musical, will be going up February 5th and 6th at 7:00 PM. So the way it's working and the way tickets are being sold, there's a link. And I, you know, maybe I'll send it to Ms. Golds and we can get it posted somewhere. So you can buy a ticket and on those nights, it will be made available, it'll be posted, and you can watch it online. So again, it's, you know, pre-recorded and we've done everything ahead of time. So it will be certainly a different experience, but I'm excited about it. And I think it will be, I think it will turn out really cool. So that's February 5th and 6th at 7:00, and we'll get the ticket purchase link posted.
Right, yeah, we put that on multiple sites.
Great, that sounds great.
Dan, will Mr. Bauer be presenting or appearing in that again?
You know, I think you'll have to, I think you'll have to watch.
Caesar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that leads us to public comment. So I think we have a question tonight. It's everyone who makes public comments can use their raise hand function. And we will call on them. How do you do that? All right, Rhonda Gilbert.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Rhonda Gilbert. I am a 25-year Marblehead resident. I am a proud member of this community. I am a lawyer, a professor, and I'm the North Shore Advisory Chair of the Anti-Defamation League. But I come here today to speak just as a member of this community where I live, where my children have grown up in. They went to the high school, they've had the most amazing teachers, guidance counselors. They went on to do good things, and I attribute the education that they received. I also like this, love this community because everyone is respectful and they're tolerant of one another. And I think that is very important for the most part. Integrity and respect are two of the most important things to me. That being said, sometimes things are said and maybe the intent of the words is not what comes out, but the effect of the words is what hurts people. In terms of tolerance in this community, I believe that, you know, race, ethnicity, disability, sexual orientation, religion, everyone is very respectful of that. But the reason that I've come here today is because I heard something that was said at the last school committee meeting about the calendar. Now, we dealt with this calendar about three years ago. And the thing that was dealt with is whether the Jewish holidays should be on or off the calendar. And we had clergy from all denominations come and speak with the, to the school committee. And everyone, including the school committee, understood that to the Jewish community, to have those days off for Shabbat and Yom Kippur at the beginning of the year, as we have always had for years and years and years, was very important. At the last meeting, it has come to my attention that on the school committee, it was mentioned that we have to look at the calendar again and see what we can do with all the days off. Okay, so really, at the beginning of the school year, the days off are really the days of the Jewish holidays. So I think many people in the Jewish community were offended by this, although not the intent, as I said, probably was not attended. But the effect of words, you know, really makes a difference here, right? And you really have to have to think about that, whether you're in email or whether you're speaking. You have to think about whether these words are actually going to offend some people. So I'm here really as well to talk about that this issue has been decided already. It has been talked about. As I said, many clergy, all the clergy in the area have actually supported it. And I just think that in general, because I live in such a respectful and tolerant community that, and I have dealt with the school committee in the past couple of years, that I hope that everyone in the community subscribes to that. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Rhonda. Thank you, Rhonda. Helene, I think I saw you trying to raise your hand.
I thought if anybody else wanted to, I'm on an iPad, maybe that's why it's a problem. But if anybody else would like to speak before me on this topic, that would be, I would...
You can go ahead because I don't have any other hands raised right now.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm Helene Hazlett, and I am the co-chair of the Marblehead Task Force Against Discrimination, which is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. But, and I was a founder of it over 30 years ago. And we've been working very hard to have a wonderful welcoming community, and we continue to do that. I am speaking on my own behalf tonight because our task force doesn't meet until next Monday. But the task force has come before this committee in the past, both Deacon Whipple and Reverend Anne Marie Hunter, who both sit on the committee. Actually, Anne Marie's my co-chair. And they have, they would agree with everything that I say, except I have not had a meeting to speak of this with them in public. And we go through the open meeting law since we're an arm of the Board of Selectmen. So I would like to make a statement regarding the 2021, 2022 school calendar. Because during this unstable climate of racism, antisemitism, it is not the right time to revisit any change to the school calendar regarding religious holidays, regarding any religious holidays. Additionally, as a former school committee member for three terms, I strongly believe that the school committee should not determine how many days a family should observe their holiday. For decades, the Marblehead schools have rightfully closed for both days of Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, and one day of Yom Kippur. I totally agree with what was said at a previous school committee meeting, and I paraphrase, that the school committee cannot tell people how to practice their religion. However, this touches something that Rhonda said. This is in direct opposition or contradiction to what has been stated at the last school committee regarding getting as many days in at the beginning of the school year, because that's impossible as far as the Jewish holidays go, since the Jewish holidays generally fall in September. So finally, to hold religious holidays, to hold school in religious holidays would create many ramifications regarding substitute teachers, testing, homework assignments. Even if the teachers are told not to test, not to allow, you know, assigned homework, it always seems that the students, there's a quiz or the students that are taking the day off find out that there's been a homework assignment they missed or they have to make a quiz up. And also, the athletics become problematic too. Even if the coaches tell the students that they're not responsible, that they can take the day off, there's a lot of stress that goes with that. Do they lose their position? Will I be played at the next game? And for the mental health and the stress with the family members, I think having school on those holidays for people that do want to take it off, it creates a tremendous amount of stress in mental health on the families. Excuse my English, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you, Helene. Kathy Kendall.
Hello. In regard to the question of religious holidays on the school calendar, my family practices a religion that is not recognized on our school calendar. My family does not have the luxury of having the schools close so that my children do not miss their education. We have to make that choice. We have to choose, do we exercise our legal right to an excused absence? Or do we send our children to school and figure out a way to observe our religion outside of school hours? I, as an, I'm sorry, as a minister in my faith, I was not questioned or asked. My opinions were at the, at the last time this was raised seriously several years ago. But I've expressed my opinion on this several times. Public school should not reflect private religions. We can practice our religions, observe our faiths. By law, we have the right to do that. But in order to be non-discriminatory and equal for everyone, we need to recognize every single religion in Marblehead. I do not believe that is feasible. I do not believe it is practical. And honestly, I don't think it's the right thing to do. We need to have school every day that is legally permissible. Five days in a row of full days of school is the right thing to do. The option is, as I say, to recognize every religion. That is what is equal, that is what would be fair. And I just don't think that's the right thing for our public schools to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Patrick Noonan.
I think I'd just like to speak quickly, you know, in support of what Kathy just said. I think a lot of districts have moved away from giving these days off. They've adopted policies that allow there to be excused absences and have, you know, take certain steps to make sure that students are able to, you know, exercise... students are able to, you know, exercise their religious obligations, but without giving the entire district a day off. I just think that this continuously comes up. I, I know there's widespread support in the town for moving in this direction, and I just wish the committee would finally step up and deal with this issue instead of continuously punting it down the road. Looking at the calendar next year, if we keep the current schedule, the students will have off Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of Labor Day week. It's just, it's untenable. I'm sorry. We're also the only district, I think, in the state that gives the second day of Rosh Hashanah off. So I would, I would ask that this, that the committee look to other towns that have adopted policies that, that allow students to be in school on these days. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Melissa Kaplowich.
Thank you, Sarah. I, I guess my comment would be that my children love going to Marblehead Public Schools. I love living here. My husband has been raised here. I, I value the education that my kids are getting here. Until such time as my children can step into Marblehead Public Schools and not have to be faced with swastikas, being called names, being put down because of their religion, then I can't honestly say that all people are treated equally in this district. To pick two days that correspond with the Jewish holidays is not only hurtful, but it is harmful. It is harmful because historically, politically, socially, economically, Jews have not allowed to have been practiced their religion freely. And essentially, saying that we should have a day of school is further exacerbating hate, discrimination, oppression. And it is painful to even hear suggestions of that in a community that is known to be a no place for hate and in a district where we, we promote and teach our children to be tolerant of all people. So I would, I would strongly recommend that the committee not make the mistakes of the past where there was a lot of hurt by members of the community and that the minority group was once again not represented. And my children do go to school and have to speak up regularly about symbols of hate. And we still have a lot of work to do in this community, although we've done, we've progressed. But hate is alive and well here, and it may be a topic that is uncomfortable to talk about, and it may be a topic that we don't want to acknowledge here in Marblehead, but it is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Kate Thompson.
So I am speaking on a different issue, so I just wanted to pause and see if there's anybody else on that issue. I certainly don't want to interrupt.
You can go ahead. We can come back to that issue if anyone else wants to speak.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. So I'm here tonight to talk about pool testing. And I'm going to leave my URL up for just a second on screen, bit.ly/marbleheadpooltesting for anyone who would like to go to that site to see the slide that I'm going to reference. So research tells us that chains of transmission or virus getting passed from person to person are in large part driven by asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic cases. So in other words, people who are sick but never show symptoms, or people who are sick and who will show symptoms but just haven't yet. So two cases. One is a July 2020 study from the National Academy of Sciences, which found that the majority of cases are attributable to silent transmission from a combination of pre-symptomatic and asymptomatic infections. So that's about 48% of cases are caused by either asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic people. And a second study out of Duke in November highlighted the importance of widespread testing of asymptomatic people to prevent transmission in communities. And it provides support for pool testing approaches. So the slide that I drove you to earlier is not intended in any way to show all the complexity of each step in the process. What it is intended to do is show how we can break chains of transmission with pool testing. So scenario one across the top is, you know, our normal status quo. So what we do with our awesome safety protocols in schools when someone is symptomatic, and we have a way to break that chain of transmission. Scenarios two and three show what happens when someone is asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, either with or without pool testing. And without going through all of that in detail, what's clearly evident is that community testing of seemingly not sick people is what breaks the chains of transmissions for everybody, not just for our schoolchildren and staff, because it catches those cases before they can create more problems. So headline so far, catching cases early has a huge impact on spread. So enter the DESI Pool Testing Program that we've heard about recently, right? So at a glance, it's billed as, it's free, it's starting soon. It scratches the itch for community testing, and by itch, I mean dire need. But at second glance, we see that it's not that easy. It might be kind of sort of glitchy, it's really difficult. There are some hangups as far as execution, disruption, potentially to students and families, minimal cost maybe to manage in the short term, but significant cost later. So all of that said, I just have two requests of the school committee tonight. Number one, I would ask you to please recognize that pool testing is not just about protecting our school community. It's about protecting our entire community. And it's a mitigation strategy that hits at the root of the problem. Like, we're not talking about like cohort A and cohort B and whether they have balanced time here. We're talking about actually managing the pandemic and getting us closer to being back in school for real and life and business and all the stuff that we're missing right now, right? So it's a big, big idea. So just to kind of keep that in mind, that like what seems like an idea about school is really a huge idea about community. And the second request that I have of you tonight is to please just stay open to learning and innovating on this, right? So I know Dr. Bucky has signed us up, you know, so we'd have a spot in the queue while we decide on this. I know that the administration is researching. I know that there are webinars being attended. Costs are being scoped, lots of conversations being had, and I appreciate all of that work on top of all the work they're already doing. I don't know where our school committee members stand on this, but I'm, I'm just asking that you please stay in a place of openness and learning and don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. So if this particular DESI program is not the one for us, or if right now isn't the time, you know, maybe that's okay. If it's going to overly tax our awesome nursing staff who are already super strapped, okay. But let's just stick with it and find something that does work. And, you know, engage with the Health Department and pool your resources and your energy. And let's have this be one of the first examples of things that we do in this year where we don't go into our corners and find reasons to hate each other's ideas. Like, let's work together and figure this out because it has the potential for a gigantic impact on our community. And then lastly, I'll just say on slide two of the slides that I shared is a link to a letter that was shared earlier this week. It's not my letter, but it is related to this topic, so please check it out. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kate. All right, I've got Kimberly Potvin.
Hi, Potvin. That's good enough, though. Just, just to echo what Kate said, I sent a letter to the school committee already and the Board of Health members earlier this, this evening. In 24 hours, we managed to get 90 signatures from the community, really encouraging you all to explore the idea of pool testing in a bit more greater depth. I've done some research already about other schools that have implemented pool testing outside of the state's program already, and they're overcoming these challenges that folks keep identifying. They've used fundraising in their community. They've drawn on volunteers to help facilitate the tests. And I think, you know, if Marblehead can put on an auction at the yacht club, you know, every year and bring so many volunteers into classroom to put on events for our students and do all this good work, we have resources in our community that we could tap into as well. And so as Kate said, I urge you to keep an open mind and explore this seriously, particularly with this new strain of the virus coming in. I worry that we could be facing more school shutdowns if we don't take advantage of this opportunity. And schools that have done it in Salem have had success at identifying those asymptomatic cases early. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right, that's it for the hands that I have raised. So I'm just going to put the main computer back where everybody can speak.
And that will move us along to the minutes. So we actually only got one into the drop-off by today, so it is the January 7th meeting, the really, really long one from last time. So I think we was close on the 17th, and we'll get there for the next meeting. Did anybody have any additions for the 1-7?
I didn't get a chance to go through it all, so I am not prepared to vote on that one, but I'm okay if you guys do. And as long as if there's any, anything I find, I'll run it by you guys and we can just, you know, amend it or tweak it.
Okay. Did anybody else feel that they need to punt it till next time?
Approve the minutes of January 7th, 2021.
All right, so David, it moved.
Second.
Megan, seconded. All right, Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris.
Yes.
Emily Barron.
Yes.
Sarah Fox. And Megan Taylor.
Yes.
All right, so 1-7 is 4-0 to 1. All right, Matt Fox, that brings us to you, and a bench donation.
Thank you. We were donated a bench anonymously for a former student of ours who, five years ago, after transitioning to the high school, suffered a massive stroke and passed away. Jake Moore was a big part of our community, even though he came in a little package. He, for those of us who ever saw Marblehead Youth TV and some of their news programs, he was a staple with his movie reviews. If you go outside of Chet's, the former, the former location of Chet's, you can still see a dedication bench to Jake. So five years ago, his mother, Beth Preston and I have been talking about a memorial and, and somebody in community donated one, so it's, it's actually sitting outside my office right now. It works great right there. But there are a few places around campus where we'd like to explore, put it in more permanently. You know, it's nice to be a little wooden bench. I think I sent pictures of it to the school committee.
Yep, you did.
And it's, 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 it's very nice. It's, it's a, it's a nicer memory. A young man that, you know, I still think about and miss.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the donation of the bench dedicated to Jake Moore at the Veterans Middle School? Can I get moved?
Seconded.
Sarah, second. All right. I'm glad that we're finally going to be able to do this for you, Matt.
Thank you.
You're no, very, it was very moving too. You could, it came across loud and clear how much you cared about this young man in your letter to us.
All right, I will take the roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris.
Yes.
Emily Barron. Sarah Fox.
Yes.
And Megan Taylor.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
That motion carries. Thank you.
Matt, will you send us a picture of it once it's in place?
We definitely will.
Thank you.
All right, that leads us up to the superintendent's report. And first up, John, I will just keep talking, is Muffy Pacquette. And she is here to talk with us about an electronic sign at the high school. So Muffy, I'm going to pull up that sign and share it as you start to talk.
Okay, great. Thanks. Well, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Muffy Pacquette, and I'm the current president of the All Sports Boosters at Marblehead High School. And for actually probably two years, Dan Bauer and the Boosters Committee and a few other people have talked about how nice it would be to have a tasteful but an electronic sign, one of those digital signs that usually has red letters coming across, at the entrance to the school, which would be the corner of the entrance to the school on the community center side angled in such a way that you could see it coming in any of the directions. So if, right, so the picture's there. Ideally, I think we are leaning towards one that looks like the picture represented here by Danbury Local Schools, something similar to that. I, I have told the Board of Selectmen who have approved this project, I told the Board of Selectmen the same thing that I told the school committee, which is that I'm going to have to come back to both of you with an actual design, but that's what we're going towards. I thought I was further down the road than I now feel I am because I'm switching gears, and I believe we're going to be using a different vendor. The vendor that was originally chosen is on the West Coast, which is very difficult to deal with. I found somebody that I like better who has given me some new and interesting ideas. And most importantly, he'll be easy to work with, but secondly, he will be a lot more cost effective, from what I understand. And unfortunately, he couldn't meet with me in person until tomorrow. So tomorrow, I'm going to know a lot more, but he knows that that bottom right corner, the Danbury School one, is what we're gearing towards. And I say that because we want it to be something that will look nice with the school, look nice with the community center, and not be an overwhelming. I'm not looking to make this look like the Vegas Strip on Humphrey Street. Just something where we can say that MCAS are canceled, or there's a play tonight, or there's a football game, or there's a volleyball game, or something interesting, or a school's closed, happy snow day, whatever it's going to say. It won't be big flashing lights. It won't be scrolling photos. It will just be text that goes across.
Great. Thank you, Muffy. Sarah Fox, I think you've got your hand raised.
So Muffy, the spot you're talking about, like right where people hold signs during the various election days, right there?
On that land there, but not, people hold signs usually on sidewalk, but yes.
Yeah, but like right where that grass area.
Correct.
Will it affect that area that dips down, the drain area?
It won't affect the drain area. We're, however it's going to be built, it will be built on a slant because there isn't a lot of flat ground in that area. So the, when you're looking at it, you're not going to know it's built on a slant, but I think the contractors are going to have a challenge to get it done. It won't be down low in that hole, so it won't affect the drainage.
And we don't have to go through water and sewer because of that drain pipe?
Apparently not. According, Jason Silva has talked to all the necessary people in this community that we're good to go. And we've been approved to use that plot of land. And what I want to make sure before I actually write the check to somebody is that school committee and the Board of Selectmen know exactly what's going there, as opposed to it may look something like the bottom right picture.
Okay, and they'll be landscaping, you're like, you'll landscape a little bit around it? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so I had. Something simple so that it's not high maintenance, but yes, we'll, we'll make sure that it looks nice.
So in spite of not having the actual financials, and so we can't vote on that tonight, I still wanted Muffy to come and present this because she's done a lot of, a lot of hard work on this already, and she's really far along. And so I, I would love to ask for a motion to support the continued.
Can I, Sarah, can I have one more thing that's important?
Absolutely.
No, I mean, the school committee read the proposal that I gave you, but a good chunk of this is donated by the class of 2020, and boosters will be paying the rest. We're just a little unclear as to what the rest is. But boosters is committed to make this happen with the generous donation from the class of 2020.
Will there be the ability that somewhere on that to, you know, note their generous donation?
Yeah, I think we can put a little plaque on it.
Okay.
That says, you know, donated by the class of 2020 and Marblehead All Sports Boosters.
Okay. This is exciting, Muffy. Thank you.
I think, I think it'll be great. And I know Dan Bauer's looking forward to it, and they'll be able to control it remotely from inside the school, and I think it will be great.
And it's a great collaboration, so thanks to the boosters and to the class of 2020.
Yeah.
It's exciting. So just can I get a motion to support the work of the Muffy and the boosters, as well as the class of 2020 in procuring this sign, knowing that she'll be back in the future for us to officially accept the funds?
So moved.
So moved.
Megan. Sarah, seconded. All right, Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris.
Yes.
Emily Barron.
Yes.
Sarah Fox.
Yes.
And Megan Taylor.
Yes.
All right, go forth, Muffy. We've got our support.
Thank you.
All right. Stop sharing that. John, I will let you take it away.
Actually goes to Eric Oxford and the CPAC representative.
Okay. So Megan, I will let you take it away.
Well, I'll just, I'll just do a quick introduction. So the next on our agenda is our CPAC representative. So the CPAC, for those of you who don't know, is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And, you know, they are an integral part of our school community. So we've got Merle Shell here, the co-chair of that advisory council, to give us a little overview of what the committee's been up to and some of the activities that are, are on board for the rest of the year. Merle, can I hand it over to you and Eric?
Yeah, unmute, Merle.
Still muted, Merle.
Nan, feel your pain.
Sarah, do you have the ability to unmute her?
Uh, let me check.
Cause I know sometimes during the, my, the first grade class, like.
I think you can hear me now.
Yeah, you're good.
Found it. Sorry, guys. I will thank you so much, Megan, for the introduction. And before I get into it, I'll try to be very brief. I appreciate the time so much. I want to thank Megan for bringing us to you tonight. And I want to thank everybody on the committee for including John and Nan and Eric, of course, for making this possible because it's a great opportunity for CPAC and I'm happy to represent us. In the spirit of inclusion, working with Eric has been a wonderful collaborative experience. He's tried to include us in everything that, that is appropriate. For example, John, you may not know this, but CPAC was invited to participate on the committee that was looking for a superintendent. So we were part of that search. And then when you came on board, you kindly gave us the opportunity to participate in all the reentry committees as well. And that's something that we seriously welcome because of course, even though we represent a certain group, we're really part of the entire community. And we believe, as we know, you all do, that inclusion and acceptance means hearing everybody's perspective and everybody's voice. In fact, before I get into it, I'd like to reference back to something that Sarah was talking about earlier. A couple of months ago, everything has a purpose and can be repurposed. And when I served in the Health and Activities Committee with Muffy and Sarah, among many others, I came up with some ideas. And one of them I thought might be useful in this day and age. And I talked to Eric about it and he suggested that I speak to Nan, which I did. And she kindly sent me in the direction of Dr. Jamie Slavitt, who is putting together a group called Growing Together. And I'm very, I came in a little late to the game, but I'm part of that group. And those are the young ladies who are mentoring the younger kids that you're talking about. And there will be many more groups that come online because they're getting approved one by one and they're very exciting kids to work with. So it, so thank you to Nan for that as well. So I hope, Sarah, you'll see many more groups coming on board soon.
Merle, please give those young ladies my regards. They, they did a fabulous job. I was eavesdropping.
Well, I might not know the girls that you're talking about. We all, we've divided them up, you know, several of us have different pairs, but I'll let Jamie know and he'll talk to all of them, I'm sure. Thank you. So I'm here tonight because the, everybody knows what CPAC is, but you might not know some of the particulars about what we do and who we try to serve. So I'd like to read you a letter. I'm just going to read it, but knowing myself, I'll probably take a couple of minutes for sides here and there, but it's a very short letter. We're going to be posting it on Marblehead CPAC's website and it will go out through other forms of communications and emails in the coming days. So I'd like to read you the letter so you get to know a little bit more about us. Okay. Hello, Marblehead Public School families. We want to take a minute to introduce the Marblehead Special Education Parent Advisory Council, otherwise known as CPAC, to those of you who might not be familiar with our work and how we might be of service to you. We are a collective voice for families and students in the Marblehead School District. Our main mission, our duty, is to help improve the education, well-being and safety of Marblehead students with disabilities. We do this by working collaboratively with and acting as advisory council to Marblehead Public School District and School Committee members on matters of special education. But as a CPAC, we have our own bylaws and we also have other things that we strive to accomplish. And there are four points. Number one, to facilitate communication and between families and the district and school committee. Two, to encourage understanding, acceptance and inclusion within the district for students with disabilities. Three, to offer opportunities to advance learning and awareness for families, educators and professionals of best practices for the education and safety of students with disabilities. And four, to provide educational opportunities for the Marblehead community at large on topics related to special education and the safety of students with disabilities. And there's a through line here that I think is important and I think is reflective of what we're all trying to do now within Marblehead. And so I want to repeat a couple of words that come up in these aspirations of ours. One is communication, which means listening and conversation, listening to each other because we gain perspective that way. And the next three words, understanding, acceptance and inclusion of everybody, which is why the fourth point is to go to the community at large with some of our programs and ideas. Because as we all know, kids with disabilities are not the only problems or issues. And some of the things that we do, we think and we hope are relevant to the community, to the community at large as well. And we want to extend our reach. So to continue, the letter is almost over. We're a volunteer organization. Our members include parents and guardians of and individuals affiliated with a Marblehead student with one or more disabilities. Our professions are wide ranging, including education, the law, music, psychology, nursing, business and more. In other words, we're as diverse a group as our community is diverse and as our kids are diverse. So to get to know us, we welcome you and any community members to attend our programs, to attend our meetings, which are all open to the public. Everything is posted on our Marblehead website, either under our events calendar or, well, on, on the events calendar. And so for more information, you can just Google Marblehead CPAC or go to the website, which is MHDCPAC.com. If you would like to receive CPAC updates and news, we encourage you to join our email list by submitting your name and email address to marbleheadcpac@gmail.com. And if you have any questions, if you want to get involved, if you want to participate, if you want to know what our next initiatives are, then contact me at M R S C H E L L, shell dot marble, M H D C P A C at gmail.com. Sincerely, the Board of Marblehead CPAC. So that's the letter that we're going to post on our website. We're going to be posting our events and I just want to give a couple of plugs and then I want to tell you about our next upcoming event, which I'm very excited about and I'd like to share. We have meetings twice a month. So we meet Tuesdays, the first Tuesday of every month at noon and the second Wednesday of every month at 7:00 PM. Anybody's invited to come. And we've stolen a leaf from the book of the school committee because we have now added public comment to our meetings as well. So that we can hear public voice and we thank you for that. So you're all welcome. Anybody's welcome to come. We also put together events and I just want to take a, a little bit of a, a minute to put something in context. Last year, working with Eric, we decided to do a conference series about issues that were of concern or questions that we heard being raised in the community, or just things that we felt were topical and relevant to our general community, not just kids with special needs and their families. And I remember that we put together a great program and a flyer. And I, along with many of the board members, ran around town putting up flyers wherever they would let us. And a week later, COVID hit and we ran around town taking down all that, the flyers, and we had to cancel our conference. But we've revived it for this year and we decided to putting it on Zoom and we looked at it again and we took out some things and added others. So very briefly, we actually started in October and Dr. Bucky was kind enough to give us a plug in his weekly message at one point. Dr. Jody Carrington spoke to us first in October and her topic was really very interesting. It was, it was really about emotional, emotional regulation. And she wasn't just talking about kids. In fact, she was mostly talking about the adults and how we can keep ourselves in check, how we can keep ourselves calm. And it's okay, we shouldn't feel guilty if we sometimes lose our cool or our patience. And it was, she was very strategic. She gave us a lot of how-tos. She took away some of the guilt and she taught us how to be role models for our kids. And it wasn't just instructional and informative. It was also a lot of fun. The next month in November, Dr. Eric Oxford came to talk to us about IEPs. And as anybody knows who's got a child and an IEP or a 504, those first few days are very scary. You don't know what to expect. You don't know what a service delivery grid means. You don't know who to talk to. You're not sure if your kid is going to get the accommodation that he or she needs. And so Eric conducted a presentation that talked about the IEP process and its purpose and how what the goal is for the community and for the district, for the school district, is really to do what is in the best interest of every child, any child, not just kids on IEPs or 504s. And that was also very well attended. We skipped December because it was the holidays. And now here we are. And next week, we have a, what, what I think, I'm very excited about this, is going to be a very excited, exciting panel discussion featuring Sarah Fox, Dr. James Slavitt. There'll be a panel discussion with all Marblehead clinicians. Gina Hart, who's a social worker at the high school, will also be on the panel. Dr. Alex from the Village School, Rosenstein, who's a clinical psychologist here, will be on the panel, as will Amanda Lockaby, who is the school psychologist at Glover. And the topic is really very, very current always for anybody, not just kids, but for adults. It's about building relationships. It's a long title, but it's really, it's really very meaningful. The title is Building Relationships in the School Context for Students Throughout Students Development. Because what this panel is going to discuss are kids, little ones, pre-teens, teens, and how we can best reach them, build relationships. It will not just be, here's what to do. It will be how to do it. There'll be a lot of strategy involved. They'll also be talking about COVID and how we keep kids interested, engaged, participatory in relationships, like the mentoring program kind of idea as well. And there'll be a long Q and A period after that. So I hope a lot of people will come and check out what we're doing. And just really quickly, in March, we're going to have a visitor from Boston University. Dr. Zach Rosetti will be coming and talking about how to foster inclusive peer relationships. And he comes to us through two Marblehead CPAC board members, Kim Howard and Scott Solberg. So they're colleagues at BU together. Scott will be actually doing our next series in April, April 6th. And he'll be talking about preparing our kids for the future, future-ready skills, whether you're going into a career or onto college, preparing you for life. We're probably going to skip May. And then in June, what we're going to try to do, we're hoping to do is what Megan Taylor said at our last district meeting was a very feel-good experience, which is the unsung heroes that we didn't do last year, which has been very popular in Marblehead for many years. We're not quite sure how we're going to get it done virtually. We're just beginning and we don't have a date yet, but all the information about all of our events are published on our website. We roll out the events through social media. You'll see the one that Dr. Slavik is going to moderate. It's going to be going out the door tomorrow. So you'll see it in social media. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate being here. I want to thank you all from the other members of the board for allowing us to speak to you and letting you know a little bit of what we do to try to service not just kids with special needs and their families, but the community at large and join the conversation of inclusion and acceptance. So thanks so much for having me here tonight.
Thanks, Merle.
Can I, can I just add something? Merle, thank you for that. I'm glad you were able to, to join us tonight. But I just want to encourage anyone who's interested to reach out to CPAC. You know, I know personally, the CPAC has been a huge source of support for myself. Both, you know, just trying to work through the process when I was new to it, but also as a way to kind of build that community and to build my knowledge base so that I could be the best advocate that I could be for my child. So I think especially for families that may be new to the process, I do just want to encourage reaching out. And thank you, Merle.
Well, thank you for saying that, Megan. That's what we're here for. We're here to listen, be a sounding board. We, we don't make policy, but we can definitely direct you to the right people. And as Megan said, we can be a comfort to you too. So thanks so much.
And I just want to give a little plug for Merle. I got to know Merle two years ago and I've been so impressed. She, you know, hadn't been too involved at that point in the Marblehead schools. And she's like, you know what? I've got this skill set and this interest. And she came in gangbusters and has been a tremendous asset. And you'd be really hard pressed to find someone easier to talk to or kinder. So if you are unsure and you're starting the process, I'm sure there's tons of people at CPAC that can help you. But I would really encourage you not to just reach out to CPAC, but try to reach out to Merle because it, she kind of just talking to her about the stuff brings a calm to it. And I would really encourage parents going through this to, to reach out.
Thank you so much, Sarah. That's really very kind. And I'd be happy to talk to anybody anytime.
And the CPAC website is also linked on our school committee website as well. For anybody who might have missed what Merle was saying, you can head over there and in our resources and links section, it should be there.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, everything is, we have an events calendar. Everything is published on it as well.
Great.
And I appreciate the plug for our new school committee website. Never gets old.
All right. Mr. Oxford, Dr. Oxford, so sorry. Still getting used to that. Would, how about I let you, I will let you be a co-host and then you can share your screen and then you can be in charge of going through the slides rather than me.
That's perfect. Thank you. While we're waiting, just, Merle, you're the best. So that's, just so everyone knows, we, we have a lot of fun at our, at our monthly meetings. So I certainly want to reiterate that. Everyone's welcome, you know, everyone and anyone. Talk everything from theory all the way down to specific, you know, nitty gritty things and, you know, everywhere in between. And so it's, it's certainly been a pleasure to work with you, Merle, and, and Mary as co-chairs and certainly the rest of the board. So thank you.
All right. You should be ready to share.
Ready to share. All right. One second here. Perfect. All right. Can you see that?
Yep.
That's good. All right. All right. Well, thank you. Great to see everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. I'll do my best to be brief, but really I am here tonight just to, you know, really for the purposes of the annual proposal for tuition, for pre-K tuition costs and, and looking for approval, you know, voting and approval, whether it's tonight or next school committee meeting. But it's a little bit different this year, rather than I think the last few years has been kind of a traditional two and a half percent increase in terms of our pre-K tuition. But this fall, we actually just wrapped up a, really a full-scale pre-K program review. We had a, a third-party consultancy firm come in, Seaside Educational Consultants, and really did, completed a comprehensive program review to really take a look at our, the current structures of our pre-K program. And so I just wanted to walk you through that very briefly and then help to outline what our plans are, our hopes are for kind of a bit of a restructure within our pre-K model and how that can then transfer and justify our, our proposal for tuition costs. All right. So as I mentioned, the pre-K program review, it was comprised of observations, interviews and document reviews. So everywhere from looking at all of our, whoops, all of our classrooms, speaking with really everyone and anyone involved with pre-K from an administrative level to our teachers, to our support staff, service providers, everywhere in between, really to, to hope to get a comprehensive view of the perceptions of what is pre-K, you know, what's working really well and what isn't working too well. Where are some areas of improvement? Document reviews included, IEP reviews and, and things of that nature, different documents. And so the purpose of this pre-K program review was really to take a look again at, at equity for all, all of our students. All of our students ages three to five that participate in our integrated pre-K program. Alyssa Zemir, pre-K coordinator, and I alongside with all of our pre-K teachers and staff have, you know, throughout the last couple of years at least, you know, identified some inequities in terms of, you know, one example is our students on IEPs who participate in that program. They're actually in school, outside of a pandemic year, they're in school less time than our model students. And that's great for our model students, but for our kiddos that we've identified really need additional services, there's some inequities there. There's some questions. So we wanted to unpack that a little bit. Certainly curriculum, you know, it doesn't have to be data all day, every day at the pre-K level. We certainly want to enhance and maximize, you know, learning through play and making sure that those, that social development is, is key and a priority. But we do need to, to sit on data and be able to look at levels of progress quantitatively. So looking at what does a curriculum look like right now? What are those structures and how can we improve? Certainly the tuition, as I mentioned. And then we, we saw, you know, Certainly the tuition, as I mentioned. And then we, we saw, you know, a really good opportunity with the new elementary school being planned to open, hopefully, fingers crossed, for the fall. And with two pre-K classrooms on the blueprint scheduled to be slated at the new, at the new elementary building was really to take a deep dive into what are those structures? What can they look like? What should they look like? And things of that nature. So that's kind of it in a nutshell in terms of the reasons, the rationale for our pre-K program review. So I'm just going to walk you through what some of the, kind of the highlights of what we are proposing for our restructure. And just a quick shout out certainly to Alyssa Zemmy. She wasn't able to make it tonight. She had another commitment. But she really took the lead on this pre-K program review, working with the consultancy firm and certainly with, again, all of our staff included in the pre-K program. And definitely our three pre-K teachers right now. They were an integral part to this whole process. So we're proposing for the start of next year, in terms of classroom, you know, individual class structures, pretty similar approach across the board. So having one lead teacher, one pre-K teacher, two support staff, so two par professionals within each classroom, and then service providers as needed, you know, to, to provide the necessary services and, and supports for all of our students on IEPs. With that said, I won't get into this too much, but we're really trying to, to shift our philosophy in terms of really having our service providers be inclusive, active in the services and collaboration that they are providing for all students, not just students on IEPs. I think there's a pretty big generalization always that service providers, so our speech language pathologists, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, so on and so forth, are all just special education. And that's not the case. It doesn't need to be the case. So how can we really expand their approach, their levels of expertise for all students? Especially at that, at that age where children are developing so quickly. The building structure. So this is, as I mentioned, you know, I've had to dig in a little bit coming into this role, a little bit late in the game in terms of the whole new elementary school building project and structures and expectations. You know, I was not a direct part of the beginning stages of that. But as I learned more about the classroom designations and what things are going to look like at the new elementary building through, within student services and special education. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, there is, there are plans for two additional pre-K classrooms to be open, to be slotted for the new building. So, you know, trying to wrap my head around, you know, what was the rationale for that and just learning? It, it really, you know, I've learned a lot about that community aspect, that equitable aspect in terms of, you know, both buildings, both elementary schools, having a pre-K to three model. And so with that, our hope is to really, in the spirit of equity and in the spirit of really, again, having, you know, following through, I guess, on that Marblehead way, if you will, of, of having those equitable opportunities. Our goal is to actually double, if you will, our number of pre-K classrooms. And so I just want to walk through that just briefly for a minute. So currently at the Glover School, we have three pre-K classrooms. So I'd walk through what that, just a minute ago, what that looks like. We're proposing, we're, we're hoping to move forward with actually a total of what's considered six pre-K classrooms, but having two traditional pre-K or preschool classrooms at the Glover School, two of them at the new elementary building. And then at each building at Glover and at the new elementary building, one transitional kindergarten classroom. So this is a bit of a progressive approach and proposal that we're, we're going to move forward. We're hoping to move forward with. We, there's a lot of private preschools that offer a transitional K or, however you want to call it, just right before kindergarten. There's different terms for them. But basically, you know, that really attracts kiddos that may have August birthdays, right? They're just kind of on that cusp of, you know, they'd be really young to be a kindergarten child. Or they just, they're just an additional year, right? Parents or the team have identified, hey, this would be really beneficial if my, if my child could have an additional year for development before getting into the kindergarten structure. So each year, the last five years, we did a little bit of digging and, and we had about six or seven requests each year from parents asking, you know, can my child stay back and do one more year of pre-K? In addition to that, as I mentioned, there are private pre-Ks in Marblehead around the North Shore. I have a current three-year-old. Right now, we're looking at pre-Ks. I've, we've identified lots of private pre-Ks that have this transitional kindergarten approach. And so that model would really start the year off, kind of the structure of a traditional pre-K classroom, but throughout the year gradually evolved to modeling what that, you know, more of a traditional kindergarten approach and, and making sure that that teacher has consultation time, common planning time with both the pre-K teachers and the kindergarten teachers, really to bridge that gap for those students that we've identified. So again, that's kind of it in a nutshell in terms of the transition K and pre-K. I'm happy to expand upon that at the end if there's any questions. So the classroom schedule, this is a pretty significant shift. We are hoping to maintain our four-day-a-week model. So currently, this is the structure where we have students receive pre-K services and participate in pre-K Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. Wednesdays are our, our staff days, if you will. We really need that time. Our teachers need that time to conduct IEP evaluations, work with early intervention, conduct IEP meetings, participate in professional development, and really allow them to have their, their appropriate prep time and planning time throughout the week. That's a pretty common approach. You'll see that, you know, throughout other districts that it's, it's not necessarily a five-day-a-week program. If some districts have five days a week, that fifth day, that extra day, is usually a half-day or shortened day, again, to allow for those opportunities. The current model right now, we have an AM and PM model that is about a little over two and a half hours each setting. There's an opportunity for full day. As I mentioned, that full-day option actually currently is only really available for our model students, not necessarily our IEP students. We'd like to shift that. We'd like to ensure equity. We'd like to also maximize the total hours per week for every child who's participating in our integrated pre-K model. So we're hoping that, we're looking for an eight to 12:30 kind of curriculum time, if you will. That, that's going to be kind of the, the meat of pre-K, you know, working through those age developmentally appropriate tasks and curricula. That would include a 12 to 12:30 lunch group, lunch bunch, super important for social development, social skills. So we would, you know, be able to have teachers and our support staff, you know, work and focus with our kids and kind of target that work from a social standpoint. And then we, we would like to continue to offer an extended day and have that 12:30 to 2 o'clock extended day happen. Alyssa presented this opportunity or thought to me, and I loved it, I ate it up, is really having that extended day focused on enrichment. Currently, we do not have our pre-K students participate in phys ed, music, art, you know, kind of those allied arts that Arcade of Three students or Arcade, you know, all the way up have the opportunity to participate in. But there's other opportunities from a social emotional standpoint, from a mindfulness standpoint. With yoga, we could look at STEAM and project-based learning and kind of integrating all of those opportunities throughout the week. So we've done a lot of work in, in, in kind of some hypotheticals about what that could look like and how we could integrate that as part of the extended day. All right. And so this brings us to the, the big piece, the money piece, is tuition. So our tuition proposals. So just to break this down. So we have, again, we have an offering of four days per week. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, eight to 12:30. Again, that expands our hours from about two and a half hours to four and a half hours per day, which would increase, which would go to about $4,000 per, per year or $400 per month on average if we span that across our 10-month academic schedule. Our current AM, PM half-day tuition is about, about 20 to 50. So it's about a 60%-ish increase. But, so I know that that seems substantial. But if you kind of break this down, and I will in the next slide, in my last slide, break this down by hours. It actually evens out per hour to be about the same rate. It's just, again, we, we're trying to maximize the time that students have to come in and, and participate in pre-K, whether they're on an IEP or not. Our extended day, again, would be that 12:30 to 2 o'clock. And so if, if, if parents chose to enroll their children and pay for the full eight to two o'clock for the four days, it would be $6,000 a year or $600 a month. And then our transitional kindergarten, again, we, we really wanted to focus on modeling that or beginning to introduce children to that kindergarten feel, is to add that fifth day. So that would be the big difference between, between our pre-K and our transition K is to add that fifth day, that Wednesday, that, that students can participate again because we're trying to expand the day, increase stamina. And so offering that eight to 12:30, but also that extended day offering as well. So again, equity, if you know me, and Merle said it too, you know, that's what I'm all about. And I think that that's going to continue to drive our work within student services for all students, not just for students on IEPs, but really equity. You know, how can we ensure that? And again, our curriculum, how can we make sure that it's equitable and provide those opportunities for students on IEPs? And our students that are considered model students that don't require an IEP to have the same hours per day, hours per week with, starting at age three, four, or five, you know, before they even hit kindergarten. What we found as we, as we learned, and I, I learned this from our pre-K teachers, is that right now with the AM, PM sessions and then the opportunity for that full day, is that the students that are currently, or pre-pandemic, had currently been in that full-day model, they just, they be, they became closer naturally, right? They're with each other longer periods of day. And those AM, PM kids that are in and out, you know, throughout the day, it was a little bit harder for them to make connections. And those were the kids that we've identified needed special education services for social development or communication. Those are the kids that we need to have those integrated opportunities, those social opportunities as much as possible. I just mentioned the hours change, you know, and the rationale for that. And then the classroom makeup. So we've done a lot of, of research into this. There's a ton of evidence and research, which actually surprised me a little bit. But to have heterogeneous classes of ages three, four, and five. My initial thought when I heard that, when Alyssa brought that to me, and the pre-K program review actually brought that, this to me as well, is that, wow, there's a huge difference between a, a three-year-old and a five-year-old, right? That's a huge gap. There's a ton of research that says that there are so many more benefits to that because just as we have our model students that we hope to be those models for our kiddos that, you know, may need some more developmental skills. Even within that, those age differences, there are true embedded natural role models. Kiddos that are a little bit older that can really model for those younger kids. All right. So finally, there's a breakdown. So I wanted to ensure that you are able to kind of see the financial aspect in, in a bit of a comparative analysis across a few different districts. We've, we dug into a few more, but I just wanted to snapshot for you quickly the pre-K programs that we were able to identify, kind of sort of close to us, most of us, most of them anyway, that had, that currently offer a model that we are proposing, right? So for the most part, a four or five-day model. I put a couple, three days in there, but they have extended hours a little bit more than we do. A lot of these districts and other districts that we've looked at and talked with have the AM, PM model. They have less hours per week. But I just wanted to break down kind of what the total cost is, tuition is currently for these other districts. And then compare that to what we're looking at in terms of a proposal for this tuition increase. So as I started to look into this, I said, geez, these numbers are all over the place, right? From Andover, $4.95 per month to Swampscout, $3.36, Manchester Essex, $500, Salem, $6.38 per month. It's like, how do you even pinpoint where we should be? So what we did is we, we broke that down a little bit more and we wanted to look at, okay, well, how many hours are they providing per week and per month? And so that hourly rate, if you will, is really the total per month cost by each district, broken down by hour, by month, if that makes sense, per day, per month. So basically, if you take, let's take Andover, $4.95 per month. If you broke that down by the, the four days times five hours is 20 weeks. And then multiplied that by the four weeks in a month because our families pay monthly. I wanted to give kind of a monthly snapshot. That hourly rate is basically what you're paying per day for the entire month. I hope that that makes sense. It's a little bit complex. So I'm happy to clarify that. But at any rate, regardless of how you break down the numbers and divide this and multiply that, the snapshot is, is pretty evident, it was pretty evident to us that with this proposed increase in tuition, our rates, our proposed rates on the right side in that pink, really align, they're right in line with the current rates of other districts right around us. So I'm not going to break down every single option. I know I was able to, to send this to you all a few days before, but, and you have it on screen now. But I'll stop there and certainly happy to answer, you know, any and all questions at this point. But just bringing it back, I guess, to the beginning is, I'm here tonight just to, to propose this tuition and really wanted to make sure that we talked about it now in January because our pre-K screening process, registration is all going to start rolling really quickly. Alyssa is going to be getting our pre-K screening and registration information out tomorrow or Monday at the latest. And we need to do our screening. We need to then potentially conduct a lottery if, if needed, and then start doing our groupings for next year. So it's, it's a month-long process to get ready for the fall and keeping our fingers crossed that, one, the new building's open and two, that we're back to normal in terms of, of what we can offer and provide. We're outside of this, this pandemic schedule. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Eric. So we asked Eric to come here tonight to present this. And then for our next meeting, we'll vote. So, you know, we've got a hefty agenda, but I don't want to not allow for any questions, but we can follow up with Eric during the week. So to kind of give us time to think about it and, and sort of continue to ask questions of him. Sarah?
I did have a few. I was taking notes. One of my first ones was who, who conducted? Was it an in-house program review? But it sounds like it was a consultation firm. And did they, did they give you, you know, suggested changes or suggested? Would, I'm assuming this is where the hours came from? Did they give you like a bulleted list or, or however of improvements, would you say?
Yes. So I actually, you know, I guess in an ideal world, I would have loved to have, I guess, pushed this presentation off another week, but I didn't from a timing perspective because again, I want to make sure that, you know, we were fully transparent with, you know, where, where we were at and making sure that this was, this information was out there, you know, to the public so that Alyssa can post, you know, at least that some changes are potentially going to come and it's not a surprise. But I just received our kind of quote-unquote "final informal draft" of the full pre-K program review. It's about 60-plus pages. Certainly, it's, you know, open game to anyone who wants to see it. I'm happy to send that along. I haven't had a chance to read it word for word, but I did have an opportunity to meet with the two consultants that participated and really conducted this review. They had a list of 16 recommendations, which is really great for us. I, I asked them to not hold back and I appreciate it, you know. And it ranges everywhere from really ensuring that we as a community embrace pre-K, you know, within our culture, you know, within the schools, within our community and, you know, trying to shift that mindset that we're not a K to 12 school, that, that we start in pre-K, you know, and that's really important to really drive, you know, the, the inclusion for all of our kids, but certainly our staff as well, all the way to different structures, certainly tuition, hours, you know, building locations and all of that stuff. So it's very comprehensive. Again, happy to send that along if you'd like.
I actually would love that. If you could send that off, Eric, that would be great. Then the building locations leads to my next question. It said that, you know, for parity, which is one of the things we, we wanted to give the community with the new building, we would have the two pre-K and then a transitional room at the new school. There, there's no extra classroom for the transitional room. I know those plans inside and out. So the only up-for-grabs room is our STEAM room, and I, I would fight that tooth and nail. So where, where is that room going?
Yep. Great question. So as I see pre-K, you know, because we have to have pre-K through special education and student services, I, I classify that under, under special education, under student services. As I've dug into the building plans or proposals, you know, again, wasn't a part of the initial planning. I will tell you that right off the bat, there is, there is one classroom location that through special education, it's dedicated right now to a special education program. That program now, it actually no longer exists and we've kind of umbrellaed that program. And so there's an opportunity to, to shift this classroom.
We just have to be, I have to be honest, we have to be very, very, very careful. We, this was a battle with the MSBA, what square footage they wouldn't reimburse with what rooms titled for what reason. And we actually don't have the ability and the right to, to change those prior to opening. And if we do, we forfeit MSBA money. So we have to be really careful about this. That's why I would love to see that report. If, if, so I'm looking forward to just getting that. And then just looking at those numbers, I think it was really helpful how you showed the per hour with the other public schools. I think it might be helpful to see a I think it might be helpful to see a comparison with the private schools in town. I've never advocated for comparing public to private, but this preschool program is a totally different dynamic. I'm, I am in the thick of that as you are, and I have been continually for many years. We're always looking at preschools and, and, and looking at what everybody's offering. And I think so we have to, we have to be cognizant of what the private schools are charging and what they're getting for the same, you know, for same or more or less. Because we don't want to price ourselves out of having model students, because as I understand it, the IP students don't pay, correct? And then that leads to my next question, for the extended day, will that be open to IEP families if they choose? Or would they need to pay for that extra portion?
Yeah, great question. So actually, as it currently stands, I don't, I haven't seen any formal language in this, but I guess the, the tradition has been that. Our IP students, you know, kiddo, kiddos on IPs in pre K. Currently, currently, as it stands, we're not eligible to participate in extended day. Unless it was driven through their IP that there was a need for a true extended day. We want to get rid of that, we want them to have that opportunity. We would, we would encourage and propose that that is paid, that portion is paid. Because again, our stance is that when we drive through the IP, those services, we feel extremely confident. We know that, that that beats a twelve thirty block, we'll make sure that we can make sure that all those services. Are provided from a special education compliance standpoint, if you will, but that enrichment time. We want that to be an open opportunity for all of our students as well.
So they, the IP students would get charged for that period? Alright, can we look at that a little more? It, it see if it's, it's necessary, because I'd hate to really curtail and limit those students' experience. And not give them a parallel experience because of the financial barrier?
I'm happy to talk with you about that. I don't, I don't want to correlate always IP student, I know you're not saying this, but IP students and financial barriers. I think.
No, I'm, I'm thinking of my own child where, you know, I, I'm, you know, I, I'm not at all. No, no, I do not make that, I am not, I actually wasn't even going down that path. I just want, I, I think that they benefit in ways from those extracurricular activities. In, in, they, I, I think all the things that we're servicing, I, I, you know, have. A lot of involvement in the early intervention community and have for about ten years now. And it's, it's a lot of times through that play, that organic play and those extra, you know, that they do. Get to experience the model peers so much. And I just want to make sure that, that they get that experience as well. That's, that was mainly my point.
What I didn't mention is that again, if, if and when kiddos, you know, on IPs and IP meetings, we've, we identify it. Or the team identifies that that's an appropriate place for those. Provide a hundred percent, but I just always across the board that that is necessary, but yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, and then what I would recommend, just from hate to see marketing, but for that extended day program, if, you know. What, what all the other preschools I think are doing, what I, my experience has been, you know. Monday is your enrichment in art, Tuesday is your dance enrichment. And I would offer it as a menu to families that I'm not going to sign up for Monday, I'm going to sign up for Wednesday. I think you'll get a lot more buy-in, because that's a long time for a three year old. And they can't do it every single day, but families will buy in if they can buy in on like a menu program.
Thank you, that was part of our plan and I did not mention that, I apologize, but that is. Really across the board, right? And not saying that every child model, you know, child needs to participate in those four days, you know, I just broke it down, it's kind of. We don't have to have, you know, every child participate Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday as well, so.
Alright, thank you so much, Eric, this is very informative.
Yeah, Eric, I, I really commend all the work that's being done here. I think as a parent where, who both of my boys went through the pre K. Hi Laura Weiss, good to see you. And, you know, it was such a phenomenal program and the only thing that was, was lacking in it was just the amount of time. I would have, you know, even, you know, with one of my boys, I was not a working parent, with the other I was. And for working parents, I think this opens up so many more marble head families that will be able to take advantage of this amazing program. And it's so important, because it really, these teachers know the marble head curriculum. And then they tee these kids up perfectly into the kindergarten program in district. And so it's, this is so important and I love the idea of extending those hours. I think, I think this is a home run.
Two last questions is I want to ensure that by splitting this program, there will be no itinerant staff. That was a promise we made, this new building, we would get rid of itinerant staff. Your staff would be housed in your building, it's so important to have that collabora, collaboration and community within your building. I want to make sure that we're not, you know, shifting staff between buildings. Because that was a big promise we made. And then also, if we're doubling the program, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, we're doubling the bu, the preschool budget.
Yes, yes.
I mean, there's no, there's no other way.
Yes, so there's still some. You know, this will, this is not a, I guess, a huge significant difference. The, the TK, transition K, you know, we got to kind of, this will be our first go around, right? If we do this, if we implement this, and I know it's super popular again within the privates. We got to see what and how many numbers we get and how many recommendations we get. If those numbers are small within those, we wouldn't necessarily need an additional, you know, two pairs for that. So that's again, not a significant, but.
I think it will be popular, Eric, that's been.
I hope so.
For all families I know, that's been the sticking point to going to the marble head schools is we, we go private because they get that TK year.
Yeah, well, that's our hope. And again, that's, you know, kudos to Alyssa to bring in that and, and allowing us to explore it. The other, you know, again, is hopefully, you know, this getting into budget is that, you know, if now that we have five or six classrooms. The total numbers, we had a waitlist last year, you know, pre pandemic of, of twenty-eight model students, we had to turn away, you know. So again, hopefully that brings in, you know, more revenue within our, for our pre K program as well. You know, I think the goal is always to kind of self-fund, I don't think we're.
It's not a self-funded program though.
And that's, I've asked every special education director around as who I could reach out to. Zero of them said, yeah, we can self-fund.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
It just does, but that's okay. But, you know, just breaking down to, you know, in different ways is certainly a good offset. And I think again, the expansion of this will allow. The ratio a little bit of our IP to model students to not necessarily have to be eight models to seven IPs. It may be a little bit less kiddos on IPs just because of sheer numbers. So maybe it's ten model students and that again, it may not be significant, but every dollar counts. And that's additional revenue that can bring in based on those ratios, so.
But we're planning for doubling our program in the FY twenty. Two, but I, I keep screwing this up.
FY twenty-two.
Yeah, okay, I just. We, everyone thinks new schools, the numbers are going down in the budget, but I just want people to be realistic, they're not.
Yeah, so I think, you know, that's part of, again, you know, it's, that's on me, it's our, my responsibility in leading our department to figure out, you know, how we're going to be able to, to fund these and budget these. You know, I think coming with the new building of those two plans, you know, we're now really kind of three. Potentially new classrooms, you know, that's some internal work we got to do. And it's already, you know, lots of discussion about what that can look like. So I'm always optimistic, like I always feel like we can make it work, but certainly you're right, you know, I'm not going to try to shy away from that at all.
Thank you, Eric, so much.
Eric, thank you for this presentation. My statements are really just for you all to consider while you're thinking this through and before we vote. Because, you know, this program, I don't want to be too personal about it, but it set my daughter up for success in her educational career. She, there's no way she would be where she is if it wasn't for a graduated preschool. So this program is so vitally important for, especially for the children who need it. And I think what Eric has done here really highlights his change in culture to inclusion. So changing, you know, looking at the model and trying to make more push in, which therefore makes. Both the student who needs the services, but also the model students now collaborating together. And both of them, you know, all the students getting the benefit from those services. And also the proposed scheduled changes. So again, that inclusion for the entire school day is equitable across the board. I think also, as great as that program was for my daughter, there also were some challenges. And this plan addresses those challenges. So for example, the number of hours, two and a half hours a day, like, okay, maybe when she's three. But as she kind of went through that program, she did need more. And especially, you know, in her case, we had to do that third year. And it was really for her just repetitive. And that's not what she needed and it was still only the two and a half hours. So for us, you know, we had to look for ways to supplement that. And it was incredibly disjointed for her and challenging for her. So to also add that TK year is, you know, for me, something that is long overdue. And is incredibly beneficial again to the whole student, the whole student base. I do think that the tuition, you know, Eric, thank you for providing that. Analysis, because if you look at those numbers, we are, what he's suggesting is incredibly competitive. For, you know, obviously for public schools, but I mean incredibly competitive for, you know, Sarah, as you mentioned, the private schools. So I think, you know, yes, there is an increase, but if you look at the increase in what we're providing, it more than is equitable for that. And the age range, you know, Eric, I appreciate you pointing out that piece, because I think it does add value. You know, even if there's older kids, you know, who are, they can build the confidence within themselves. So I think that is an important piece to note about the program as well. So Eric, thank you very much and just, you know, something to consider as you work through it.
Thanks, Megan, appreciate it.
That age range combination is more of a Montessori but model, right?
Um, yeah, yes.
I mean, I don't want to put a label on it, I think it's great, I mean, I've seen schools that do it in a fabulous way.
Yes, yeah, no, there's, there is a lot of value, again, as I mentioned, I. My initial thought was, whoa, no way, no how, you know, we got to be a little bit more homogeneous just from developmental standpoint. But, but yeah, there's a lot of benefit. And, you know, within that, you know, naturally there will be, you know, not every five year old working with every three year old, right? There's going to be homogeneity in that, and small group work and things like that. But, but yeah, again, the evidence, I was proven wrong in my own, you know, thoughts. That, which I appreciate always, so.
Emily?
So my comments just really quick. So last year you said you had a waitlist of twenty-eight students. So I might be kind of like, my kids are too old, but um, when I was looking at preschool, I didn't know about the integrated preschool until my son was in kindergarten probably. So, I mean, it's great to hear that there is a waitlist, so maybe that's changed, that more people in the community know that we have this great program. And especially now with the new changes. But if there's a way to advertise it or get it out there for young, not necessarily new parents. And, you know, in looking for preschool as an option, I just think some people just don't even know that we have that, because they're not in the schools yet.
Do we have peer models this year or because of COVID, did we limit peer models?
Uh, yeah, everything's limited, but we do, we still do. We were able to maintain our integrated model, I was very proud of the, the pre K, the teachers and Alyssa. Throughout the state, that was not across the board feasible for a lot of districts. They were actually running into a lot of issues that integrated was not an option, so. Yeah, that's a quick shout out.
That's great that we were able to, because that's so important.
Alright, well, anyone here for you to continue this conversation with Eric offline? And then Eric, we'll have you back on next time around and we'll vote this for you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Alright, John, now I officially turn it over to you under your section to talk to us about the calendar.
Alright, as the public comment informed us. Calendar was a hot topic after last school committee meeting. And I had started down a road in some conversations about the calendar. That changed and that's okay. So things changed as of five o'clock tonight, because I had two versions of the calendar. But one was contingent on MEA, looking at some of the proposals. And one of the proposals was accepted and another proposal wasn't. So that took version two of the calendar off. And so what you have here is the proposed calendar. I reached out to superintendents in other districts. And probably the most common advice is in your first year as a superintendent during a pandemic. Follow past practice. And so I did reach out to Rabbi Meyer, Rabbi Rogozin, leaders in the religious community in town. Other voices to ask questions, to try and understand. Because my phone did start ringing after the last school committee meeting. And so I wanted to make sure that we were maintaining what we did. Understanding that there is a great deal of history here. And that history comes with significant emotion. And so what I put forward to you was approved by MEA. And it has us starting with the two professional development days in August. We would have children, the students in, what is it, K? No, one to twelve, starting on the first, we would do a half day on that Friday. Then we would have Labor Day, the two days of Rosh Hashanah. The ninth and the tenth would be school days that following week and the blue indicates open houses. And so the ninth would be the open house at Vets. The following week, we would have Yom Kippur on the sixteenth. And again, the blue highlights indicate open houses, I think it's the elementaries on the fourteenth. The. No, yeah, and then Village on the twenty-second and the high school on the thirtieth. We have four approved professional development days. And I have listed again, per advice, what we have done in the past. And that is to have that up against the Indigenous Peoples' Day in October. When I talk about budget priorities, we're going to talk about a K eight math adoption. And so where professional development days would fall. Might be contingent on work that the selected vendor or program is available. But I have put that there at the twelfth. I know sometimes schools will use Election Day as a professional development day, because schools are polling places. In some communities and that came up here this year and we did not make the schools polling places because children were present. But that could be an option. We have put in the parent conference day for the ninth. The half days for the twenty-third, very, children and families will be disappointed. The holiday recess next year, spoiler alert, is really short. Probably the shortest it will be in a calendar. We have a professional development day in January. And again, those days are mirroring past calendars and there is some flexibility in, in how those are scheduled. So fast forward, you can see before you the, the calendar, this particular version, this calendar that I'm asking you to approve. Would have the last official day on the seventeenth. And then the one eighty-five day on the twenty-fourth. And I tried to put month by month, how many days in school. You can see there are some months that are shorter than others. The holidays in December, February is a short month, April vacation is a short month. But I'm happy to answer questions, but this is the proposed calendar for next year.
Thanks, John, I know that you were really hard on this. And then rehashing over it and probably three, four, five times as well. So I really appreciate that. And I think, you know, I think it's wise, you know, my thoughts, but if we're going to do anything, it needs to be through a community committee. So if we decide to take that up next year, when hopefully COVID is over and we have fewer committees functioning generally. That, you know, that's, that would be great, but I think, I think this is, this looks great. Anybody else?
Yes, so I, one, one question I have where we look at this in where Rosh Hashanah falls. Is how, did you look at a model that actually front-loaded the professional development days? Taking that indigenous, the Tuesday after Indigenous Peoples' Day and slid it to the front to front-load those? Because I think also we learned with this year that when we front-load those days and we have continuous days of professional development. It's, it's very impactful and gives you a lot more ability to do things. And I wonder if it makes sense, I, I think about this, not just because of the way the holidays land this year, but really. but really also where we're bringing this new school online. And there is a likely probability that the school will be ready to open in September. And that shift between starting after those, those three, those, the sixth, seventh, and eighth versus before realistically may make the difference of if we start those kids in one building and pay tens of thousands of dollars to move them two weeks later, which is not just a financial decision, it's highly disruptive to small children. It is anxiety provoking, it is a lot. Um, or if we want to check in with the design team and Gilbain and see the likelihood of where we're at with, with that September move-in. Um, and, and potentially look at, like I said, front-loading those, those days. Um, because really if we front-load them, I believe that that shifts our calendar one and a half days. Um, and I have to believe that it's worth shifting us one and a half days later at the end of the year or potentially on another long weekend. I can't see in the bottom of the screen for some reason, so I don't know if there's another professional development day embedded somewhere. Um, but I, I just want to make sure we're looking at it if that keeps that giant transition from happening.
Those were conversations that we had with MEA about moving uh, front-loading those dates, and that was not approved.
Do they understand teachers will be setting up a classroom and five to 10 days later breaking it down and resetting it up? Because that may sway them.
Is that, is that what we're talking about here? I mean, that isn't something I've heard, so.
Well, I'm saying if we shift us one and a half days later in our calendar and start us after the, that first, start us like on the ninth, that, that really shifting our calendar one and a half days would give the Gilbain team a full extra week and potentially get us starting in the new building.
Oh, it's not going in the other direction. I suppose it backwards.
And just so I understand, Sarah, you're saying the first day of school would be Thursday, the ninth?
Yes, and that we would take October 12th.
We would lose the first, second, and a half day on the third.
We would, well, we would take October 12th Professional Development Day and front-load that on the first or however you fall it. So instead of having two days in October PD and one in October, you have those three impactful days. And then we really are making up one and a half days and we slide that later in the year.
We have two and a half days that first week.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry, Sarah.
We have two and a half days that first week.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if we take out the 12th of October and swap it for one of those days.
Yep.
We're only making up one day or one and a half days.
Oh, and tacking that on to the end of the year.
Yeah, and, and, and it's hugely impactful not to move our youngest learners. I mean, anybody that's gotten a kindergartner, preschooler, first grader in that first week of school, to move them two weeks in is, is really actually, it's gonna shake a lot of kids. And it's not easy for teachers to, to set a classroom up to welcome students and break it down two weeks later over the weekend because we won't have a break to do it.
So I think I understand what you're saying, Sarah, but I guess I'm not clear on, is that, like from a building committee perspective, is that, is that where we're at? Like, is there, is there a date? I don't, I didn't underst, I didn't get the impression.
Right now, I mean, we're always, our official date, our official contractual date is December. But in all realisticness, right now, they're ahead of schedule. And correct me if I'm wrong, David, if they carry on the schedule they're on right now, it is highly realistic that we would be in the beginning of September.
Right, but, okay.
I know, that's, that's, that is a possibility with what you're saying, Sarah, but I don't think, you know, there's going.
We, we've heard, we've heard at the building committee that Gilbain, RDA and Left Field will reach a point when they will give us fair warning of when the school will open. And it will be um, a point in time that will be months in advance of.
I guess I'm asking, are, have we touched base with them to see when they're ready to make that call? If it's in three weeks, then should we delay this?
We, we can, I think it's a reasonable question that you have, that we can ask them. And now that we've voted, if we vote a calendar tonight, we need to make that calendar available to them and, you know, talk about September 1st. And I, so I do understand, I understand perfectly what you're saying. But, you know, what if the school's not ready on September 1st? What, you know, what's plan B? Um, with, with the students and what you're saying is we'd be required to open up schools and then pack up the classrooms after just two days or three days of classes. If Gilbain, for some reason, we needed another week to finish the school, but um,
A week in the construction world is a big time. And what I'm saying is they're saying beginning of September. So I, like if, I, I don't know, I, I think that week pushing, I think pulling that day and a half and making it up at the end of the year, it makes a significant dis- difference in us potentially getting kids in that building on day one.
I, I would just hate for us, I, I totally understand what you're saying, Sarah. I guess, um, I don't know that I'm comfortable making a decision to move it by one and a half or two and a half days, whichever it is, on the basis of the building project when we don't have that date. I mean, it, maybe it isn't the ninth either, maybe it's the 11th.
Right.
So I guess, I, I take your point. And if we need to come up with a plan B, then, then we can do that when we have more information. Because we just don't have that information now. But I think in the meantime, we should aim for a start and end date for next year.
Yeah, I, I.
And no one's willing to bump it that day and a half later in June.
Well, we also, bumping it the day and a half later in June also is gonna bump it to the, if we use our snow days, which granted, we have not as of late. But then we're at the, at the snow day date of 28th. And that starts to, you know, we're well overdue for a bad winter. Um, so that starts to make me really antsy as, and again, especially because we don't know, again, what happens if it doesn't, if it's not open till the 16th. Then we've even, then we're, we've kept kids in, in a building even less time because we, because we overplanned and, and tried, kind of tried to foresee the future. When, you know, I, I, no one's gonna like to hear this, but we did change the calendar this year. And although it's way less than ideal, you know, we, we've got MEA's approval on this one. So it does make sense for us to, to move forward with it. And if it necessitates being looked at another time, we can do that. Um, it's also one building, and I know that it's a large chunk of our, our young kids, but it's, it's one building. And we've had issues at one building level before where we then have worked with the state to make up days at different places for those children. Um, so I, I would also just hesitate, you know.
Well, it's more than 15% of our student body population.
Right, but you're talking, like, if, it's a subset of our population as well. So it, you know, if you've got high schoolers, now you're talking about, you know, not getting out of school until the 22nd or 23rd because of kindergarteners that, that like, I don't know, I, I guess I just.
I'm, I'm just, again, I hear my former superintendent in the back of my head.
I can't hear you, John.
I would just, again, I hear my former superintendent in the back of my head. He was from New Hampshire, and so snow days were life to him. And so when he came to Nantucket, he started asking all these snow day questions, which didn't make good sense to any of us because we get like one every three years. But he always cautioned using that last week in June as your buffer. Because if you do, how about that winter? Then you need to start looking at breaks and Saturdays or vacations that, because you can't go past June 30th.
Right.
So that isn't a flexible date. And certainly a day and a half, you know, we can look at that, but that does put that 185 into the final week.
I mean, in years past, we've given up Good Friday. We could give up Good Friday. Two years ago, we gave up Good Friday and I don't recall it being an issue at all. And I say that as a practicing Catholic.
Last year, I remember that being a big issue.
Yeah, that was a huge issue last year.
But I, I, how? I pulled my kids from school. Teachers were certain, were su- super respectful. It was easy.
Right, but there were other families who didn't feel that way. And so when we talked about it last year.
This was a topic that we spent a considerable, a considerable amount of time talking about because it is meaningful to some families. So we have to be sensitive to that and I.
No, and it's, it's very meaningful to my family. I bring my children to stations to the cross. It's not, not meaningful. Do not, both me, Megan.
I think we also have to take our superintendent's recommendation too.
That while we know that the calendar is an issue we need to address, we also have a lot of things on our plate. And this may not be the most appropriate time to try to address that.
This is definitely.
My main concern, I am deeply worried about moving these students a week in. If no one else shares that concern, that's fine. I think there's a way to be respectful of all holidays.
We all share that, we all share that concern, but it's a concern that we could, we, if we try to overanalyze it right now, you know, nine months out, we could, we could move ourselves into an even bigger pickle of, of, of trying to, we're, we're, this is.
We're analyzing, we're playing foremost Omenak. We're analyzing the potential snow days.
Right, and so I'm not down for that.
With experts telling us a realistic move-in date that we're, we're not carrying.
Of course we can. Of course we can. And I think that's what we're saying.
All right, so. All right, so I will ask for a motion.
Could we just, I'm sorry, interrupt.
No, go ahead.
So the, the reason, you know, we're voting a calendar for planning purposes, but it's also, there's a, it's in the contract, right? That says the MEA wants to know what the school calendar will be by a certain date. So I think what we're saying here is if there was something impactful, I'm glass half full, so I hate even speculating on this, that impacted the opening of a new school and we knew in advance, I would suggest that the teachers would work with us. But that's, that's just me. I'm glass half full on this. And I totally hear what you're saying, Sarah, and we can, we can bring this, we can bring this back now to the, to the project team. But the project team is um, you know, when you said early September, we, if, if we want to try, we can tell them the first day of school is going to be Wednesday, the first now. And we can ask them point blank, you know, how, where do we stand? But I think um, you know, the, the pressure is on, the, the sched, the project is on schedule. And um, if things continue the way they have, I like to think we won't have any issues. And we do have to remember there's a little bit of flexibility. I know teachers do have to pack up, but they're not taking much with them because it's a brand-new school. You know, we're leaving all of our tables and desks, probably most of our technology behind. Um, and there, yes, there will be things to move, but you know, you're, you're moving, you're moving into a, a new house that's fully furnished. So you don't have to take your furniture with you and, and a lot of the things that come along with it. So I think we are speculating a little bit about it, but I, I'm glass half full. I think the school will be done in plenty of time. But we just have to let this critical path of the project continue forward. And I do, I hear what you're saying, Sarah. If the project had another week, wouldn't it be great? If the project had another two weeks and they started school on the, on the 13th. Um, but I think that's speculation and conjecture at this point, if the project even needs that time.
Well, I think, I, I think when I interviewed, it was David who told us to stop talking. Or Sarah, because when I was in Littleton, we had a building project and it was a September move-in that became Indigenous Peoples' Day move-in, that became Veterans' Day move-in. I think this is where David asked me to stop.
You didn't have Gilbain.
I recognized that, you know, things can take a turn. And so I'm not sure, looking at the day and a half is going to give us the buffer if in fact there is a, a major delay in the building project or something goes afoul.
And I mean, again, I think we've seen the, the, we've, we've changed our, our calendar this year and we changed our calendar last year. When, you know, something catastrophic happened and we have to go back to the drawing board. And so, you know, I don't think that opening the new school a little late is, is, would be considered catastrophic considering COVID. But um, you know, we can, we can look at this again. If, if there's a major kind of shift, we can look at this again. And we, and when we have the information that we can plan with, we can plan appropriately.
And I think MEA will be amenable to there was a major change.
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, Sarah's right. The teachers also have a vested interest in, in not moving too quickly within the new year as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, because they, yes, they don't have to move desks, but these people put their heart and souls in getting these classrooms ready and welcoming our children and countless, I mean, it, they don't go in one day before us. I know that's what, or two days, that's what the calendar says. They're in there, most of the, chunks of the summer, getting these spaces ready for these kids to be cheerful and beautiful. And you're not gonna tell me any of these teachers, if you say, well, you're gonna move in a week, are gonna say, I'm not gonna do it this year. They're still gonna put their heart and soul, they'll kill themselves to, to get it done. That's the type of people they are.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I also think we've seen an incredible amount of flexibility on both the part of our teachers as well as our students. And we certainly don't want to tax them any further in that flexibility. But, you know, it's, it's there in spades. And so, again, whether it's looking at the calendar again or, you know, having a different move-in date that, that isn't foreseen right now, I think, you know, we can, we can bring this back up if needed. So I will ask for a motion to approve the proposed calendar for 2021, 2022 school year uh, with the caveat that if we need to look at it again to make small changes, we can. Emily moved.
Second.
David second. I think there's been a lot of discussion, so Sarah Gold, yes, David Harris.
Yes.
Uh, Emily Baron.
Yes.
Megan Taylor.
Yes.
And Sarah Fox.
No, and I want it noted for the record, it's because I'm in favor of a September 9th start. So we can be respectful, but also, you know, in my mind, plan appropriately.
All right, so that passes four to one.
All right, John, the budget calendar and priorities.
Yes, the next slide is the budget calendar and it very much mirrors what the committee did last year in terms of planning and timeline, um, taking into account that there is some flexibility to move dates up. Um, I put uh, some things in gray that are just merely placeholders to mirror what they were last year. For example, in March, the 29th, the Finance Committee, I've had no conversations with the Finance Committee that that is our date to present. Um, most pressing, we have a budget uh, subcommittee meeting tomorrow morning. Um, another budget subcommittee meeting on the 28th. The first meeting in February, um, will introduce the draft budget and that'll be the budget notebook and the worksheets and things that uh, you have seen before, but will be for the FY22. Then on the 9th and the 11th, we'll ask the leadership team uh, to present their budgets. So you'll hear from each of the building principals and Todd and Michelle and Nan and me and athletics. And so those uh, in talking to Bill, can be long meetings. Um, so he recommended that you start earlier as opposed to going seven to 10. Um, you have then some meetings after the February vacation into March and uh, then April. Um, and this was approved by the budget subcommittee as the draft calendar to bring to you.
Yeah, great. Uh, thanks, John, for going through that. I do just want to highlight as with last year too, this is, the draft dates are obviously subject to change. Um, John mentioned we are meeting with the town tomorrow. So, you know, we'll make sure that these dates line up with their plans as well. Um, and, you know, I think we're gonna shoot for the 18th of the public hearing, but I think as we go through the process, we'll know if, you know, that still makes sense.
Okay.
One question I have about the fourth, that looks like it's in a regular school committee meeting. And I've been hearing loud and clear from the community that they feel our, our agendas are very heavy and, and our meetings are running extremely late and I think we all feel the same way. I wonder if that introduction, which is such an important time, if that doesn't become its. I wonder if that introduction, which is such an important time, if that doesn't become its own meeting? If that gets embedded in our normal monthly meeting? I, 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 I just think our agendas are getting really, really long. And I wonder if we're getting to a period where we might need to for a period meet more often?
Um, I mean, you know, there's just a lot to be done. I, I absolutely hear what you're saying. And, and I knew going into, I knew from the last meeting that this agenda would be rough. So I guess I would just say, you know, we, we're all asked to do our homework outside of meetings as well. So if we can do our homework outside of meetings and kind of come to meetings prepared to listen to the presentation, ask any lingering questions and sort of, you know, start to clip through things. I mean, I was looking at an agenda for another district that actually delineates the amount of time that is spent on different subjects, which I think is a phenomenal idea. And, and they were running with a, with an executive session an hour and a half long. So I think, you know, there, there's precedence for us to push through this. You know, we are elected to do a job, so we, you know, doing our homework outside is not, is, is, is a good thing. So I just.
I agree, but I think that the discussions and the questions are important to happen in the public eye.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that as long as we all come in knowing the basics, that can happen.
Can I also just add a comment there too? Is that if you, I don't know if you guys remember from last year, this is exactly what we did last year and what we used that meeting for when the budget books were introduced. I mean, in the case of last year, it was the first time we'd ever even seen a budget book. So Bill had to take the time to walk us through each section and kind of explain the purpose and the layout. We don't need to do that this year because now we know, I mean, with the exception of Emily, who we can, I'm sure get up to speed, we know how it works. So really what the intent of that piece was for our agenda on the fourth is for John and Michelle to hand out the books, but also just highlight some of the key points so that we can start to consider that before we do our deep dives on the 9th and the 11th. So my expectation on the fourth, similar to last year, is that we wouldn't spend a lot of time on the book. It's more just to get it to us, highlight the pieces we need to start looking at so that we can be prepared for those next sessions.
That makes sense.
Okay. And you'll have the books, John and Michelle, you'll have the books ready for pickup on the third? Okay. And is there any room to buffer bump that five, five o'clock, you know? It is, it's not realistic in my world at all. Six o'clock, I can make work, asking my husband to, to leave work two days early in one week for a five o'clock dinnertime meeting is, is not realistic, nor, nor does it really include the community in my mind.
I mean, I, I hear you, Sarah. I mean, obviously I've got kids at home too and a husband that works like insane hours. The only thing I will say is that I think we also have to be considerate of the administrators who are going to be coming to these meetings who have already worked, you know, probably 10 to 12 hours at that point. And we're asking them to be on top of their game to walk us through these budgets for another two to three hours. I just think it's a big ask for them. That's my personal opinion. I'm open to changing it, but that's.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm in theory open to changing it as well. I think that that's a really valid point though. And I hadn't really considered it.
Last year, we walked in the door, I, I noted this because I remember it was my birthday. We walked in the door at six and we walked out of the door at seven, 25 because Bill had made me that promise. I'd, I'd make my 7:30 commitment and, and it was fine.
Right, but our administrators start at 7:00 a.m. So now they've already, you know, that's a 12 plus hour day for them. Twice in one week, never mind the other extra meetings that they have to do for their jobs every day. So again, I'm not saying I'm not open to it. I just have a hard time making that ask of them.
Okay, I guess we can just, I, I won't be there at five. Let me just, I cannot, school committee meetings have never been at five. It won't happen. So you guys decide.
That's just, you know, my opinion. It's open to some conversation.
Budget, I, I don't think we need to make the decision tonight, really.
5:30?
Is that better?
It's better.
Um, I mean, we don't have to vote this. This is, you know, the proposed calendar. So, you know, we've got, we've got another meeting before this. So why don't we sort of tentatively say 5:30 and just kind of feel out staff a little bit? Given, you know, given the, the Zoom nature of it all, it, you know, it might, it may give them a, a chance. I don't know if they want to stay in their offices or if they want to go home, you know, to kind of, particularly because we are breaking it up. And I think it's being broken up into like principals and then like other district officials. So maybe one of those nights, the preference is to do a little later and the other night is to keep it at, you know, 5:00, 5:30. So. Alright. So we'll, we'll work offline to, to kind of cement that out. Alright, and then priorities?
Do we have priorities? So again, using last year as a template and the notes from school committee meetings and some of the conversations, certainly meeting contractual obligations and we'll have an executive session tonight to be able to talk more about what that might mean. But that takes into account the steps and the lanes and the differentials and course reimbursement and things that are included in the CBA. And I maybe should have put another bullet there. I know there were some people in the system that went without raises last year that we would certainly want to make sure that might not fall under meeting contractual obligations, but should be a consideration in the budget. Technology, that should not surprise anyone, given the amount of conversation that we have had about our woefully inadequate infrastructure that needs significant attention. And kudos to Stephen Quiatek, who saved the district money and was able to have a conversation with the audit firm and to share some of his findings, which they said these would have been things that if officially submitted, we would put forward. And so they had a good conversation and we're not paying for an expensive audit in taking his findings number is very scary. And so that's why technology is a budget priority. And he will talk to the committee about that. And so I'm not keeping information from you, but it is his to walk through because it is so detailed. There's a lot of intricacies that go to infrastructure, hardware, software, licenses, networking that are way beyond my skill set. But I know enough to put technology as a budget priority for the year.
I'm already terrified.
Curriculum, again, I talked about the pre K to eight math adoption series. Nan is doing an amazing job of leading a very inclusive process to vet math series programs, vendors. She has a committee of teachers representative across schools and grade levels. So that worked. She will probably come to you in March and talk more about that. But that is a significant investment for the district. In that, I think Nan will talk about some curriculum coaches to support that. And I understand that even through the interview process here, that curriculum coaches was something that the district was interested. So that is a budget priority for us. Central office staffing, I looked at Bill's and he said reorganization. I think that's a loaded word and causes people great anxiety. So mine is reinstating the Human Resources Director. And I have had just superficial, preliminary, casual conversations with Jason about is that a position that we might partner with town on in the absence of a Human Resources Department Director in town? And so that has no flesh to it, that has no number to it, but it is, you can imagine in COVID with all of the H R demands, that has fallen to a clerk, to Lisa, to Michelle, who have done yeoman's work in a field that isn't their specialty. And they have done a lot of work. And so having the Human Resources Director, I think is worth a budget priority. Certainly communications, we have relied on a volunteer for the most part. You all had access to the contract of what we paid. We paid for about 200 hours. At last, the communication support we were getting was over 700 hours. I think it is very clear that this is a community that values communication, values transparency, values being up to speed. And coming in, we didn't have an infrastructure. We didn't have a robust website. And I don't want to see that fall to other directors, the way some of the human resources work has done. And I think we have made a very strong case that a communications position, I don't think it will come in as a director. You know, I don't see it as an administrator at first, but in order to maintain what we have established, it has to be a budgeted position. Facilities maintenance, and I think that, I don't want to steal Michelle Cresta's thunder. Somebody did point out to me that the audit should probably not be a priority because you have already funded that and it is going to be approved hopefully tonight. And then the findings of those should be a priority for maybe a long range plan. And I know the facilities subcommittee has already engaged that conversation about how to take the facilities audit and put that into a long range plan for funding some of the capital needs that we have across the district. And then I, clearly the new school, and I think Sarah Fox said it tonight, there will be budget implications. I learned tonight that we promised that there would be service providers for that school. And so I was unaware of that as developing the budget. So as things are promised, I, it will be important for me to know. So as we're developing a budget, I'm not missing promises made during that process. So I'm glad the new school is on there as a budget priority. And we have some contingency plans, almost to what the point Sarah was making about a delayed opening. If we are indeed in December, that's a huge budget implication because you have coffins still open and Evolus still open. But the new school that will have costs associated with it because it's not, no longer in the construction phase. So you'll have utilities and things like that. And then if we're still in COVID, what is the plan B if we are still at a three foot? And I hope we are not, and I have plans for us not to be there through the end of this year. But we don't know. And so I think budget wise, it is important for us to plan for those contingencies and that falls under the new school. So those are budget priorities and certainly they will be fleshed out during budget presentations.
I agree. Alright.
Okay, Sarah. Um, there were a few things that we had kind of talked about last year that we would have liked to make priorities or they were priorities, but we had to pull them off the list. And I just want to, I want to put them out there and, and see if we're looking at this. What, one new one is I, I'd like to see a priority about any, planning for any potential loss of learning, particularly with the tier one supports and providing more tier one supports. We all know that that catches kids before they need to potentially go on an I E P. I think that coming out of COVID, we're going to need to really budget for more of those. And I, and I would, would like to see that as a priority.
Do you want me to address that before you go to the next?
Yes.
Yes. Well, we're ahead of the game on that. And Eric and Nan are going to use some of our Student Opportunity Act money to do summer programming this summer for learning loss and remediation. And so we will be making that an option. It is not part of the budget. It is part of that SOA funding. So I have made a note here, Sarah, to make, have a conversation with the leadership team about that.
Okay. And that wouldn't just be the special education students. That would be.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then we, one thing that's come up in different conversations is Village is one of our, is our second largest school population wise. However, when you look at, you know, the staffing there and particularly the guidance department, we have two guidance counselors covering an astronomical number of children during what might be arguably like a really tough time for that guy. Like, you know, these are tweens and, you know, adolescents. And, and I, I know there's been a lot of talk that, about a need for additional guidance at that level. So I didn't know if that was a topic. Our, a second team chair at Village, we have one team chair handling over 700 students. And then another one that comes up in that same field is an executive function coach. We see a lot of kids that really need that help. We see the executive function piece coming, really where the rubber seems to meet the road, particularly at that seven and eight grade level where, you know, they might've been holding it together, but they're not. And, and I think looking at that might be, or I, I think we need to look at those items.
Well, the executive function coach, I think I would, I would circle back with like our, with Eric and our. Other curriculum supports because a lot of those skills are taught through curriculum support, our learning specialists. You know, again, counselors can teach those types of skills. So that, I completely agree with where Sarah's had that, particularly for seventh and eighth, because I think there's massive EF pieces with that. I don't want that in my own life. Yeah, but especially with COVID and how it's disrupted the, the middle school. But I also think that, you know, it's not non-existent.
I, I think it's always good to be at a school committee meeting where you already have the answers. And that was in meeting, Michelle and I met with each building principal and each director to talk about what are your priorities? What do you want? What do you need? And how can you pay for it? So if we are going to have a level funded budget and we don't know right now, but I think that's a safe assumption, given what we're hearing across the state. How, if you have a priority, what can you give to get, for, for example? And so I know that we have met with each person and we're very blessed, and I meant to start my comments, to have Eric Oxford in special ed because he is always looking at what we have and making it better. And so I know he is looking at current staffing in special ed and how we can use that staffing and what is already funded in better ways to attend to some of the needs in the district. And really he deserves the shout out for the pre K presentation because that's exactly what you want administrators doing, making data informed decisions. He engaged a consultant, he got a 60 page report. He had the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, classroom level teachers, paraprofessionals, all the voices in there, got recommendations and then immediately set out to address those recommendations. And so the entire administrative team, that's how we're approaching budgeting this year, is what is the need? Can you make a case for it? What does the data in your building say? And part of that is the math curriculum as a budget priority because that is something that the districts need, the district needs to look at K eight. So what has come forward in the budget priorities, I think will foreshadow what you will hear from building leaders and directors when they present their budgets to you. Because this is part of the conversation.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, not to like stop this conversation, but just in, I think looking at the talk. I think some of these points, they're valid, but we're, we're probably worthwhile having when we've got the administrators and can talk about, you know, those in, in more detail, especially if some of them are, you know, building or, or grade specific. So I think if, if we can just kind of agree, or if there's anything to add from a district perspective that we've missed here, you know, I think that would be good feedback at this point, but I think some of those detailed questions we should, we should save for those, for those conversations.
Just John, as they present, if you can ask them to kind of present also how any of these changes really further the goal of more, more inclusion? the goal of more, more inclusion? Because I think that's our goal is to maximize inclusion. And I want to make sure that, you know, we're allocating funds to do that.
All right. Well, we all look forward to getting our books. Thank you very much.
That's hard stuff for me not to go to calendar number two.
All right, well, I will let you watch your screen. And then we'll turn to the financial portion and Michelle.
We will ask you to take us to speed with the monthly financial report. Do you need me to allow you to share your screen? You're muted. Does that help? Let's see. All right, what about, can you do it now? I made you a co-host.
No. Yeah, I tried to ask him to unmute.
Yeah, I know the teachers do it for my daughter's class and the kid has to click on, I accept.
Oh, there you go, Michelle.
Here we go.
All right.
Oh, my gosh, I couldn't do anything. Okay. Now, how do I, can I share a screen?
Yeah. Your co-host, you can.
Share screen. Okay. So do you see the financial report memo up right now?
No.
No. Great. Technical difficulties.
I can see if I can.
Zoom is starting to feel like an awkward party game.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Okay, well, I guess I will just give up on that one. So I know you guys don't have.
Yeah, we've got it in our packet, so.
Yes, I was hoping for the general audience, but it will be posted eventually on the website.
It's, it's out on the website already.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. Awesome. Perfect. Okay, so for the financials as of the month of December, we had spent a total of 14,936,000 or just over 36% of the operating budget. There were not any significant changes during the month of December, which is great. We had a pretty quiet month, knock on wood. But it will stay that way. Our current projected shortfall in the special education tuition area that we monitor very closely, the shortfall remains at 93,000, which was the estimate the previous month. One other thing that we're continuing to watch is the substitute teacher line. We are continuing to have the challenge with being able to secure substitute teachers. While this is actually beneficial to the budget and we've only spent about 10% of our substitute budget as of the end of December, this is very, very difficult to manage in our schools and very hard to work around. So as of the end of December, we spent just over 24,000 in subs. That budget is $232,000, so we've spent just over 10%. Also in your packet, I did the monthly update of the COVID expenditure report. To date, we have spent 1,447,000 and we have encumbered another 378,000. We are anticipating additional costs in the ballpark of 87,000. And that will bring us to the 1.99 million or just over the 1.9 million that we've been projecting for the past few months. That number has not changed so much. The good news is we did have an extension of the CARES Act funding that we received that we can spend it into the new year, the new calendar year now. So far, we have not received any commitment to have additional funds. But well, we have received word that we will be receiving. We haven't received an actual commitment, so we do not know what the additional funding will be under the CARES Act or for COVID relief. But we are promised that we will get something. But even, even with that being said, our, our existing funds are now able to be spent in the new calendar year, which is a great thing. So I just updated the spreadsheet and all of the areas that we're spending. There's nothing new there. We are continuing right now our contracted cleaning services. The remaining cost of that would be about $48,000 and our storage trailers of the items that we had to remove from the schools due to COVID. It's about $4,500. And that's about it for the financial report, if anyone has any questions on that.
Michelle, I noticed in the monthly line item that you gave us, there's roughly 425,000 that's, you know, starred. And at first glance, it looks like it's unbudgeted, but you are too good at this. And I know it's not unbudgeted. I just want to clarify, are those, those are items that might have been listed somewhere else? And if you correlate that line item will kind of be at zero, it all balances out correctly. They were all, they were things like para salaries at specific schools or an ELL tutor.
Yeah, you will notice that all of those items are salary lines.
Yes.
We are, we continue to not have the manpower we need to change the salary account numbers. It's, it's an extremely time consuming process due to the way that we've been operating in the past and our financial software. This goes back to that bottom line that our financial software causes us triple the time in a minimum that it should take us to do any simple change.
We're looking at adapting a new program though, right?
Not in the near future, eventually. It has finally made it to the town's capital plan.
But not this year?
I do not believe so. Do not believe so.
That's too bad.
So it's just a time consuming process and I do have spreadsheets. So I know we are good in those areas.
Okay.
Concerned with what you're seeing on these reports. As long as those, those discrepancies show up only in the salary lines, I'm good.
They all were salaries. And that's what my, that's what my assumption was, but where we make this public, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah.
You know.
Nope, it's out there. Eventually, we will get it fixed because it needs to be, it needs to be perfect going into the new budget year, basically. So we do have a little bit of time. Like I said, I'm not concerned about it. I do monitor that on, in my own spreadsheets. But it's, it's a super time consuming process to get it cleaned up. And eventually, you know, once we get this budget passed and whatnot, hopefully we will have the time to devote to cleaning.
Well, I mean, there's already been a tremendous amount of work and a lot of cleanup that has happened in these salary lines. So I don't want to take away from that. But for the stubs, subs, this is a recurring problem. It's obviously a bigger problem in COVID, but it's been a problem for a while. I really think we need to figure out as a district how we're going to fix that because we can't, we can't keep overtaxing. I mean, it was beautiful to hear Mandy talk about her getting to interact and to do what she did. But we can't keep self-covering in our schools the way that we are.
Absolutely. We know it's a challenge and hopefully we, I mean, I think every, every district had this challenge prior to COVID and COVID just made this challenge so much more difficult for all of us.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michelle. We always appreciate the updates. So that leads us to the contract awards for the capital needs assessment.
Yes, so last, I believe it was last week, these weeks are all rain, rolling together now. We solicited quotes for a capital needs assessment that we have been talking about for months and months and probably over a year now. This capital needs assessment would include all school buildings. And at the request of the town, we actually threw the police station in there as an alternate add-on, as long as it didn't make us go over our threshold for the bidding in this, this method. So we added that on. We did receive four responses. I had sent out four requests to firms that I knew their background on. I have either worked with before, received proposals from them before and asked around. So four firms that we sent them out to, we got responses from all four firms pretty quickly. So the four firms were Onsite Insight, which Bill had worked with previously, Habib and Associates, EBI Consulting and Drumney, Roseanne Anderson. The highest quote came in at 54,000 for all the school buildings plus the tap, plus the police station. And the low quote came in from EBI Consulting of 38,170. So it's a pretty substantial range for the assessment. Their proposal from EBI was great. We thoroughly checked their references. We're very happy with what we've found. And at this point, we would, I would recommend that we award a contract to EBI Consulting of Burlington in the amount of $38,170. And they will be able to basically start on this tomorrow as soon as we sign the contract. And they should have a report, a draft report to us within six weeks at the maximum. And then the final.
That's great, Michelle. Now, knew that was the company that you were going to try to vet a little more, correct? In their quote, in their proposal, they had add-ons?
Yeah, they had. They had wording in it. And basically it was a template contra, or a template proposal that covered them for more in-depth architectural programs where additional services might be required. And I made it clear and I received it in writing that we would not be charged any additional fees unless it's something that we agreed to in terms of testing or further investigation. So there will be no additional cost to this.
And it was the same scope as everybody else?
Yes. Yep. It was.
Can I get a motion to enter into a one-time contract with EBI Consulting in Burlington, not to use this in the total amount of $38,170 and to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee? Megan moved.
Second.
Oh, David, a second. All right. Any other questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
All right. Great. Stop in right nearly tomorrow morning.
Perfect. I'll have it printed for you. And then the last thing I believe that I'm speaking on this evening, yes, is each year, the school department needs to submit a letter to the Board of Selectmen asking to renew our one revolving fund, which falls under a certain category of Master General Large, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half. It's just basically the general revolving statute within the, within the law. In this category, we have our special education tuition fund. We have to set an, or rather, town meeting needs to set an annual amount, which we cannot exceed for the expenditures in that fund. This year it was set at 900,000. I actually thought that was a little low last year because there's no harm in setting it higher than you actually need. But there is a concern if it's too low, like literally if we met the, the $900,000 threshold, but yet we brought in a million dollars in revenue, we would not be able to spend that million dollars. So I always recommend having the threshold higher than we need. So next year, I'm recommending that the limit on the, this fund be set at 1.2 million dollars. This year, we're going to be spending just under 900,000, which is our limit. So I do want to up that limit a little bit. If you have any questions on that, let me know. But we will otherwise be sending the letter to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen tomorrow.
Is that the only warrant article we're putting in?
Yes, at this time.
When's it, the warrant closes though before our next meeting, correct?
It closes tomorrow, actually.
So can I just address that please? So we have in our meetings discussed putting a placeholder like we've done previously, Sarah. And we may still do that. You know, we've spoken to Jason and, you know, he doesn't need that from us by the 22nd, which is the deadline for, which is the deadline for any other like community warrants. So, you know, he's aware where we're at. We're in constant communication with the town and we've got some buffer there. So that if we do need to put a warrant article on and we need to vote on that, that we have the information that we need from our budget discussions to make that a legit ask.
So we can definitely, there will be an opportunity if we need to add that.
What Jason said to me today is that he'll, you know, we can kind of keep it on the, on the books for now, but we're not going to vote it because we don't have the information to vote it. And like I said, we can, and it's open for discussion. We can put the placeholder in tomorrow. I just, I don't know that it's valid and we never end up, you know, the past two years, we haven't ended up using it. It's not to say we won't this year. I just don't think we have the information at our disposal to make that decision.
We also talked about the potential of putting in a placeholder. We glanced over this, I think, two meetings ago for giving the Beacon Street property back where we've designed, determined it's not buildable for our purposes, of potentially putting a placeholder so we can talk about this in more depth of, of putting that, giving that back to the town if they have a use for it. I mean, we can't, we're not going to decide that tonight, but I don't know if that's a placeholder we should be looking at.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would think if, if, if the town wants to do that, they, they could also add that article at a later date, you know, with, with our request. Like Megan did say, usually when they close the warrant, it's really for articles that are not town sponsored.
Okay, I just want to make sure because there's been some talk about possible uses for that in the town side.
Okay, absolutely. And the selectmen can reopen the warrant at any time up to a certain point.
Michelle, do you need us to vote this for you?
I do not. I just wanted to make sure you guys were all aware of it and why a dollar amount out there, but thank you.
And we don't have to ask for a potential placeholder to refund or to, to add, to replenish the special reserve fund, right? Even though we're not planning on using it right now?
Um, I don't believe so. I'll double check with Jason tomorrow. When I spoke to him earlier this week, he said this was the only one needed. So I'll double check that.
Okay, I know we're not planning on using that, needing that this year, but.
But if we need the article, we'd rather have it there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the schedule of bills. Can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills totaling $301,975.66? Megan moved. Emily, second. All right. Anybody have any questions on that? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
I need to abstain. I'll touch base with Michelle tomorrow.
Okay. Emily Baron?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
And Megan Taylor? All right. Four to zero to one. Okay. Now, the must anticipated school naming discussion. So the plan for this evening is that we all are given an opportunity to put a finalist name into the list. And then we will solicit feedback throughout the coming two weeks. And then at public comment at the next meeting on the fourth, I believe that is. And then we will vote one of these names on the fourth. Anybody want to start or you want me to?
Go for it, Sarah.
All right. So I'm going to pull this. Pass it around so that we're not yelling quite as much. So, all right, so I can honestly say that I have spent the last year mulling this name over because it was on a road trip to DC over MLK weekend that I had my first big discussion about where my head was at at that point. So a lot has changed, but in the past weekend, I dug into a few different suggestions. I learned about some really amazing people in Marblehead. I looked at the heroics of Chris Piper and Duncan Slay. Learned a little bit more about Will Not Red and her really grumpy attitude. The Glover family.
There were three Hannahs in the one immediate family. Lydia Pinkman, she was high up on my list of finalists. She was an inventor, entrepreneur and marketing case whose products continue to be sold today. And then I also learned that the Dixon Techcon Maroda pencil was originally made here in Marblehead, which.
which was like the quintessence of my dorky high school years. Because if you found one of those in the hallways, your day was made. However, after all of that research, I came back to the name that I originally fell in love with last year. So I feel really strongly that this new building needs to be a fresh start. Yes, it's built on the site of the Old Bell School, but that building is gone. And the new building needs to have a name that, that enables it to create a new culture. I think that the previous buildings that are, that have the children going into it needs to be honored in different aspects of that school. We'll take that up a different day though. So the staff and children are no longer from Bell or Gary or Coffin. And they have, they need to be the new face of this school. Um, and so I think this school needs to create its own story. And that is why my recommendation is going to be for the Joseph Story School. So I know that there is also a story school in the past and that it was the first modern school to be built in Marblehead. That building was turned into condos over forty years ago and is on the national register of historic places. So although Marblehead will inevitably build new schools again at some point in the hopefully very distant future, this building is the final new one in the twenty-year master plan. And I like the concept of kind of that first school and last school with that, with that name.
So most, or more importantly, in my opinion, Joseph Story is one of Marblehead's most amazing members of history. And that's saying a lot. Story is often viewed as someone who aspired to be above politics, which I think we can all appreciate at this point. He's well known for his opinion in the Amistad case. And he's worked closely with other historic Marblehead and surrounding area residents such as Samuel Sewell and the Crown and Shield family. He remains the youngest person to ever have served on the Supreme Court. And he served at a very important time in our country's history. Story was part of the Marshall Court and my lawyer husband actually teared up as he explained to me on that car trip. Just how important that court was and how it shaped what we currently still hold to know as the constitutional law. And Story wrote a large portion of the opinions issued by that court. Story believed in the creation of strong unions of states and our town is now creating a union between three previous school populations. So honestly, it was first time to this name because I love our bet and his last name is also Story. But as I researched the actual justice story, I really became completely enamored with his legacy. So I truly believe this would be a great name. But if we go in a different direction, I really enjoy.
We lost sound from you at the end, Sarah, but I, the public heard everything you said, but the last few comments, it goes out. We can't hear you at all.
I don't have a point for statement that, uh, that you had, Sarah, but, um, I also have been thinking about this for a long time. And we've talked about it a number of times. And, um, like you, I think it was for me, a great lesson in Marblehead history. And we are, we are truly blessed in this town to have so many figures in our past that have had, you know, made a great impact. Um, but I, and I also agree that I would like the school to really have the fresh start. Because we are kind of combining three schools that have their own histories and traditions and cultures. So, so I'd like to, you know, that was in the back of my mind as I was considering all the names. And before I tell you what my, the theme I'm putting forward is, I also want to thank the community for being a part of this process and to continue being a part of this process. Because as I've said every time we've talked about this, it's a community building and it's going to be here a lot longer than any one of us is going to be on this committee. So, you know, I think it's important that we absolutely do get the feedback from the community once we've, you know, gone through tonight. But that said, I have chosen the anchor school. And I've chosen the anchor school. A for it's linked to our history being the birthplace of the Navy. Also as our link to our maritime community, which is a very important part of Marblehead life. But also because an anchor, the definition is to provide a firm basis or foundation. And that's really what I'd like the school to be. I'd like it to provide that basis for that combined school community. And be representative of the foundation on which this new school can build its new history, its new traditions and its new culture. So the anchor school is my suggestion.
All right. A great one.
Oh, sorry. You're directly across from me. Sure.
So I too have been, um, thinking about the name of this school for a long time since I've been on the building committee. It's always been an exciting topic to think about. But, um, I was able to research like Megan and Sarah and, you know, this town is absolutely amazing and our history is so wonderful. So I used the list that we were given last, at our last meeting as a starting point. And two of the suggestions stuck out at me. And the first was a woman's name and that was just on the list and then also Joseph Brown. And as we all know, Marblehead has a rich history. And I believe it's important as a community to acknowledge all people and to teach our students all, that all people deserve to be recognized in the full history of our amazing town taught. Our amazing town to be taught and cherished. Joseph Brown lived in Marblehead before, during and after the American Revolution. He became a member of Glover's regiment and fought for our independence. After the war, Joseph came back to Marblehead and with the help of his wife Lucretia, operated a successful tavern in town where all walks of life mingled. And Lucretia created and perfected the famous recipe of the Joe Frogger cookie. Joseph was born a slave and is half Wampanoag Nation and half African-American. He was freed after the war and Lucretia was born free in Marblehead. The written history of this respected couple is mostly based around Joseph's life. And this shows the bias that has hidden away so many women's contribution to history. And Lucretia is rarely acknowledged in our town. And I feel that the naming of the new school brings an opportunity to show the importance of women in history. As well as creating learning opportunities for our students and to show that here in our community, we respect all people. So I propose the name of the new school to be the Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary School.
All right. I thought this was going to maybe make it easier and. I don't know that I really need to bring this much closer to you, David.
I will just, um, you know, I, I will hope to be as prepared and eloquent as the three of you have been next week. After, or next meeting after we hear the, um, public's feedback, which I really hope we'll, we'll get this information out there and, um, people will, will chime in once again. I too being on the building committee, we've, we've been dying to get a name and an identity for the school. And I think it will help if we can make this decision. And when we did look for the name suggestions last year, the, the number one vote getter in town was the Gary School. And, um, so my recommendation is going to be that we stand by Elbridge Gary and, um, carry on that tradition, even though that building will remain in a different structure, just like the Story School is well done. It's over on Elm Street, if you happen to be on Elm Street. It's beautiful, beautiful red brick school. And, um, it still stands. But I'm in favor of just because of, you know, the, the, the history of that and the legacy that he left as, um, you know, being our, being the governor of Massachusetts, then being the vice president, vice president, albeit for a short term until he, he unfortunately passed away, but also being, you know, one of the signers of the Declaration of Independence. And one thing when I was reviewing my history on him as well was, I think going to school represents, you know, perseverance and, um, you know, you have to continue to try to do better. If you don't do well on something. And, um, I never knew, but Gary ran for governor four times. I think that's more than Richard Nixon ran for president, right? Before, before he won, but he ran for governor four times in Massachusetts. And on the fifth time, he was, um, finally elected governor of Massachusetts. So I think it also represents a little bit of perseverance there when it comes to his legacy. So I'll, I'll stay with, um, Elbridge Gary and leave it at that.
Thank you.
I think everyone has made wonderful expl- suggestions. David, when you want to lobby more for Gary, I'd have Jim come and read his speech because he brought me near to tears when he, uh, read it at our meeting last spring. He, he really did a lot of research. As I was going through this, I've, I've been at different points at different times. Over the summer, towards the end of the summer, after losing Judy Jacoby, I really felt strongly I wanted to suggest naming the school in honor of Judy, who loved this town, donated so much of herself to this town. And I don't think I ever saw a selectmen's meeting where she didn't reference her time as an educator and think about our students. And their, and teacher side of things and educator side of things. And so I felt that would be a beautiful tribute. However, then the community center went and they renamed the community center for Judy, which is very fitting because she spent so much time donating, uh, to the senior community. But that, that was originally my thought. So I started to dig in. And the schools in this town are beloved treasures to the people of Marblehead. They're not only house and protect our greatest assets, our children, but they become our neighborhoods. We all know how important the Gary and the Coffin schools are to their neighborhood and we wouldn't have it any other way. That's why we formalized at town meeting that the Gary School would keep its facade, its name and the beloved playground will maintain its status as community space to be enjoyed as a meeting place for the neighborhood. That's a whole nother thing. I think we should come up with a way to redesign and redevelop and, and grow that outdoor space. So that it livens up that, that area and contributes to it, but that's another story. However, I feel strongly that the Bell neighborhood is no less important. It takes its neighborhood name from its school. If we change the name of the school, we erase the neighborhood's namesake. But perhaps more important to me is the origin of the, the name and why it was chosen. Remember when my kids first went there, I could not understand for the life of me who Malcolm Bell was and why we chose that name. As I've dug in and done more research and read articles, I found out that he held many town and state offices. He was a product of public education and later went on to Phillips Andover Academy. Malcolm Bell was first elected to the school committee at the age of twenty-four. When I read that, I thought, I am letting, I want, I want to know where Dan Howells is at twenty-four because he's going to be our youngest school committee member. He served during some of our nation's and town's most trying time, much like things we're seeing today. Ironically, he was a school committee member alongside Samuel Evolus during the Spanish flu pandemic. He even enlisted in the US Navy while continuing his duties as a school committee member. Evolus also enlisted in the armed services while a school committee member. I read in one annual report that the students in Marblehead during his tenure here chose to plant their own, plant and maintain their own victory gardens at school, which was not only inspiring, but shows the roots of the garden program. If I'll go a bit deeper than any of us thought. After serving nine years as a school committee member, he moved on and served as town assessor. Um, also on this board of selectmen, many years as chair, and then ultimately as a state house representative. What was so important to me is throughout his tenure in public service, Malcolm Bell never forgot his roots as an advocate for the schools. It is so important for us as school committee members to constantly advocate for our schools, for the needs of our schools, our students and our teachers. And he never forgot that as he moved through other levels of government, the schools and education were always at the forefront of what he was fighting for. So often we honor important members in our community by naming buildings for them. I firmly should believe we should continue to honor Malcolm Bell's commitment to advocating to the betterment of our public schools by maintaining the name Bell Elementary, shortening it to simply Bell Elementary. Our town is rich in generous philanthropic citizens. Malcolm Bell was one who valued education, dedicating much of his life to public service and advocating for our students. I do have trouble with, he also donated, um, through his estate, some of the money that helped purchase the land from what I read. And I have trouble with the idea of taking these donations and entering in relationships of sorts with individuals, then forgetting the good deeds and generosity and leaving behind the fruit of those relationships. For that, I am nominating the name, the Bell Elementary School.
All right. Five very good names.
Then there were five.
So, Chris, I know you're still on here. We need help from the public at this point. We need some guidance. So do your thing.
But how do we ultimately vote? What if we all voted?
Well, I think someone is going to have to leave their name.
So I, just so I understand, um, we've got our school committee email that people can email their thoughts to us. Um, and also we will have public comment at the beginning of our next meeting. So those are the two ways that the public can provide their feedback on these five names.
Yes.
Okay. And then I'm assuming then we have a robust conversation in our next meeting and we'll have to, we'll have to narrow it down to the one.
To the one.
The beauty is in two weeks, we will have a name for this.
We will. Yes.
Whatever that name is. That is such a beautiful thing.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right.
All of that well thought out preparation.
They're, they're good names.
They are great names. They are great names.
Emily, I have to tell you, there was some teachers that recommended last year, the Joe Frogger Elementary because, um, they learned about in the kindergarten class, the origin of the Joe Frogger name.
See? Perfect.
Well, they wanted it to be named after the cookie, so. The kids were really behind that.
All right.
How do we?
All right, let's move this along. Um, all right, we've got some policies. This is our second read. They're pretty basic. Any questions? Let's take them offline because there's no massive changes. So I don't feel like this is a big piece. Emily, did those make it up onto the website? Yeah, the policies onto the, into the packet. We can put them up for the packet. And so if anybody from the public has any questions, then they can do that.
Does the memorials one negate what we voted tonight?
No.
Okay.
No, because there's an addition in there about, um, at school committee discretion.
Okay. Cause I want to make sure that stays. That was important.
Right. Yeah. No, we're good. So then we'll vote them at the next one.
Okay.
All right. Subcommittee and liaison updates.
I mean.
Budget.
We've heard budget and CPAC, so I'm good.
And policy is done. Facilities, I think we are supposed to be voting on the facilities recommendation.
The capital?
The capital, yes.
Did we? Did we do that at the last meeting?
No, we did the fleet.
Okay. All right. I thought we had covered it. Um, so so I missed, interpreted RDs. I thought we covered it at the last meeting. Um, I apologize. Mich- Michelle has that, she's still on, Michelle has that list?
Yeah, I have that right here. Um, I apologize. I thought it was not going to be a vote. I thought it was just going to be informational. So I apologize as well. Yes. So the facility subcommittee took a vote at their meeting last week, I believe. To put five items forward to, um, the town for consideration for the capital budget. The first was replace the fire, fire alarm panel at the high school for twenty-five thousand dollars. And this is in no particular order. This is literally in the order that they are on my sheet. The second was install the card swipe system at the high school for roughly thirty thousand dollars. The third thing was replace the fire alarm system at Vets, the complete fire alarm system for a hundred and five thousand dollars. The next was install, install a card swipe system at Vets in addition to the high school for another thirty thousand. And lastly, it was the installation of hardwired carbon monoxide detectors. This is the next step in ensuring that we are doing the absolute. This is the next step in ensuring that we are doing the absolute most we can in terms of the carbon monoxide detection and these, these new detectors will be hardwired to all our alarm panels and will go to emergency services if we should have an alarm go off. Right now, we do have the detectors in all our schools, but this is the next step up that we really want to take and is being recommended. And that total is $34,145. So total being presented or hopefully being presented to the town for consideration would be a total of $224,145.
In itself explanatory, but all of these, we prioritize life safety and security.
So last year and the year before, we made sure that we had these prioritized in case the town can't cover every single one. And then as a school committee, we voted on them. So are we not doing that this year?
Well, the information I had gotten was that the town was very confident at 200,000. In fact, they could probably meet 250. So we felt good at 224 that we were really in that window of their goal.
So if they, if they tell us to trim it, are you going to come back to us or do you want us to prioritize?
I think if they tell us to trim it, hopefully we have our assessment by then. I didn't get the sense they were going to ask us to trim it. I mean, Michelle is the inside scoop now, so maybe she knows.
No, I, I haven't heard anything on that front, but we are also actually working with the company who gave us the quote on the CO detectors to see if we can handle a portion of the installation ourselves with our electrician. So that cost may come down as well. So if it does need to come down, you know, $10,000 or whatnot, or 15,000, we may be able to swing that. And actually, we are going to try to get the Evolith school done this year. So that may be another $5,000 less on that cost. So we can, we can most likely make it work if we have to come down to the $200,000.
And just so everyone's clear and isn't shocked at, at some point when this comes out, we need a new roof at the high school and that estimate's $2 million. That is, I, I don't think we're going to get that at a capital. We're going to have to at some point do a facilities override. That's a big ticket item. We can't keep kicking down the road.
So not to harp on us, but just point of clarification. So unclear also going forward. Normally what has happened is that the work gets done with subcommittee and then it gets brought to the full committee for a vote at that point. And that's not what happened here. So I'm just trying to understand what the process should be because that's how it's always worked in the past.
This is, no, we're doing the same thing. I was on the committee last year that did this.
Our school committee meeting.
You know, I, I'm not disagreeing with that, Megan. Just finishing my sentence. And, and we're just bringing it forward for us to vote or not vote for, for approving this, the recommendation. But the recommendation from the facilities committee is to bring forth these items.
There's no reason why we can't make a motion to vote it.
Right, yeah.
At this, at this point in time. And I think as what happened last year, I think we did have to pay some of our expenses back. And we, we did some wheeling and dealing in different areas and we ultimately took a vote as a committee. And we did that two years before too. So, yeah, I would expect that if something changed and it came back at us.
I think, yeah, and I think just to speak to your, what I think you're saying is that all work done at the subcommittee level comes up to the committee level when any decisions need to be made with recommendations from that subcommittee.
Exactly. Because the one thing that I do want to talk about, and obviously safety is the number one thing, like I get that. But one thing we talked about even with Bill is we're talking about putting in something at an individual school. Really, he recommended that we look, try to look at it from a district wide plan. We talked about it technology. We did talk about it with the fire alarm systems too. But especially with these hard swipe or the card swipe pieces at, you know, high school and Vets. We've also got a new school coming online. And so I would like to see what that plan is for all schools to have that functionality and make sure that we're doing it in a systematic way that is as cost effective as possible.
So just so you know, we talked about that, Megan, and Glover has it. The new school, it's built into the budget and Village has it. So those two schools were identified because they're the ones that don't have it.
So and all of them will, that's the same system. So we're not.
Yes, the systems will talk to each other and John won't need a different card to swipe into a different school.
Okay. Great, all right. Okay, wonderful. So can I get a motion to accept the list provided by the facility subcommittee as our capital request?
Why don't we mention that the total?
With a total amount of $224,145. David Moon. Emily second.
And Michelle noted it may be less.
Right. I, I recommend we, we put through the full amount right now, but if we have to finagle it, then we will.
All right. Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox.
Yes.
Emily Baron. Megan Taylor.
Yep.
And David Harris.
Yes.
All right. That passes five to zero.
Can you share your screen, please?
Yes.
I'm going to let you, can I let you share? We can't hear you at all, David.
Yep. She'll move it over. Just getting my screen. Can, can people see the screen yet?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So these are, as I tried to do with the update, these photos were, were taken today. So this is the, what would be the, the main entry, looking into the entryway where, where the bus turnaround would come in. And you're seeing the, the gymnasium and cafeteria and the white section that's cordoned off is where the mural is going to rest. And so that work is, uh, work is finishing up and moving right along. This, this is the, the Great Wall of Marblehead, as it's being called on the construction site. But as you go up, um, behind the school to go up to the new recreational space and the organic garden and everything that lives up behind the school. We've been very fortunate due to the weather. Normally this work would have stopped probably a, a month ago. But due to the, the mild weather we've had, lack of snow, they are pressing on and ahead of schedule. And I, this picture just doesn't do it justice. It's a, it's a beautiful stone wall and the stone is very representative of the ledge. That's all around the property and it just, it, it's really beautiful in the way they're, they're getting that, that wall constructed. This is looking out from the media center. So just another view, you can see going down through the cafeteria and the forefront, the multi-purpose stage that has passed through on both sides and on the far end, the, the gymnasium as well as the staircases that were put in and the concrete was poured yesterday. And as you can see, lots of product that is on site, laid down and ready to be installed. So we're not incurring any delays at this point, waiting on materials. This is the, this was pretty cool in the tour. This is a model classroom. And so the Gilbane sets up a model classroom. So all the different contractors and trades can understand the materials that they're working with, see what kind of installation is required for the various materials. Maybe something might even need to be tweaked by the architect because of the installation. It has the air diffusers for the, for the air conditioning. So they're able to see. And if you look on the firewall, I guess we can call that Steve's Black Box. That's, that's where the actual flat screen touchscreen projector will go. So they've actually procured the, the boxes where those will mount. And this will continue to be developed. It was just, they just started working on it last week. So that, that was exciting to see. And that's actually on the second floor. I think it's a, I think it's a second grade classroom. Looking out towards Dartmouth. And then last but not least, there's our vice chair, Ralph Wallace, and chief inspector checking out the, the hundred plus windows that we have and the, the quality of the work that was done. And this is looking once again down the, the Dartmouth side of the building and you can see the corridors and the connecting doors of the classrooms. And it's just really amazing how much work has been done. And so I would like to also suggest that as a committee, we find the time to get over there. The best time is 3:15 when construction stops. So maybe as a committee, we can come together and get over there and, you know, see the progress. And Sarah, I think we need to do the same thing again with the building committee. You know, maybe we offer it up in, in groups of 10. Or we just put it out there and see how many people want to attend for the building committee because it's just, it's just really amazing to see, to see the work at this stage of the progress.
Great. We love that.
Yep. Yep. And now Sarah, you just want to give a quick word about we voted the interior finishes last week at our committee meeting?
We had one of our shorter meetings, which was a source of pride because they can go long. We had our interiors meeting where we presented, our Jean presented a slideshow, which we, we should bring to a school committee meeting if we can, like a limited one. Where we selected the interior finishes in color palettes. These are, you know, the tiles, the linoleum, the, the cork board colors, the locker colors, things like that. We still have to select the FFNE, which will be more the furniture, the technology piece, things like that. It was unanimously applauded by the committee and I thought the, the presentation went really well. We got a lot of really positive feedback. And I thought it was great. I also had the opportunity to be at a school advisory council meeting at Coffin and Evolith when they presented it to the, those teachers who will be the ones teaching in it. And they were overjoyed. Their, their feedback, their comments, it was, it was amazing to hear. So it's really exciting. You know, we had a few parents on there with their kids over their shoulders watching and, and the kids were chiming in. So it's really exciting. The next stage obviously will be FFNE. And right now we're also just dotting our i's and crossing our t's to make sure we're getting our lead points. I think John's going to talk about that a little bit too. These are, these are things the architects identified early on that will, that will get us the points towards lead certification, which increases our reimbursement rate from the state. Things we were doing anyway in our district, but they just, you know, they need documentation for each of these things. And so we're just going through those hoops of getting them that documentation. So that's where we're at. So we've lost our entire committee. They all got kicked out. I just got a text, which means we are no longer quorum and we are no longer technically a meeting. I also don't know, oh, Michelle, you're the host. Is Michelle still on here? I'm going to guess the internet went down at the high school. So.
I guess I'm the host now. Lovely.
Yeah, we should be recording this for town meeting when people say we don't need that technology upgrade. Chris, I expect you to write about this of why we need our technology upgrade. Sadly, it happens, you know.
You know, I'm not going to lie. It's kind of hilarious.
Well, it happened in the middle of the school day at my, at Village today. Oh, Sarah Gold's back. She got her, she got her meeting back. Um, Sarah, I did note that we were no longer in quorum and it technically was not a meeting anymore. So.
I think she's frozen.
You know what? I bet you she's doing it from her phone. Anybody have any good things?
Well, I mean, three and a half hours, guys. So I'm just saying.
In all seriousness though, this is a great example of the, the constraints our staff is like teaching through and how amazing they are. Can you imagine doing this with, you know, 20 first graders on your screen and they just, they come back on the screen and they're cheerful and they're not stressed and they just power through. And so this, this is a good example of what COVID is like.
Sarah Fox, can you hear me?
Yep.
So I.
Chatting with everyone, David.
The eagle, the eagle has landed. I'm the only one that has connectivity. Emily.
Emily's there.
We, we lost connectivity on the wifi. So it was just refreshing.
Sarah's on some screen, but she appears frozen.
So we're trying to bring that back up and I suppose we could.
I think technically we need to be able to hear everybody before we can call ourselves back to order. I unofficially paused it, David. I don't know if I have that authority, but I.
Yeah, you can, well, I mean, you, what we've been doing is that the sound comes from one microphone.
Okay.
So we, we could just read the executive session. But we'll give it a little while longer.
I said this was almost like too perfect to prove our budget goal of technology. I have to laugh that I was the left one left that I could probably the most least prepared to keep the meeting going. We can't hear anything you're saying. All right, there we go. You turn it, all right.
People hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
You kind of have the voice. You got it. You're good.
So I'm going to take that as a good sign. I don't have it. So we, do you want to just move it to?
Do you want me to read it for you, John? I have it.
That would be great, Sarah.
Okay. Do you want to give an intro to it or?
Yes. To be eligible for lead certification. Katie Martin has written a letter for me to sign. The reason I brought it to the committee is the last paragraph talks about it might have budget implications. And I think the PTOs, as the letter outlines, pay for two coordinators. But it does make reference to there is money there and we're making a three-year commitment. And it also said the Bell School in it. And I don't know if that's, the garden itself is named for the Bell School. And since we had naming, it was just something that I wanted the committee to hear the letter, hear the budget implications and give me kind of the thumbs up. I'm not sure if that's to be an official vote or not. I'm fully in support of sending the letter, but because the name jumped out at me and potential budget implications, I wanted the committee to hear the letter. So.
And just to clarify, John, I think that budget is referencing that the building budget has, has a chunk of it that was, that was allocated to build the garden. It's not our operating budget. It's the budget to build the new school.
That's why I wanted the school committee to weigh in.
Yeah. Angela can have enough lead consultant, Raymond Design Associates. Dear Angela, as we work towards lead certification, please find the following letter detailing the story, history and future commitment to the Bell School Organic Garden. The Bell School Organic Garden was established during the 2012, 2013 academic year at the former Bell School location. The garden was a grassroots effort supported by parents, teachers and school administration. The construction of the garden was privately funded through donations fundraisers in the school PTO. The garden provided outdoor experiential learning for all students at the former Bell School. Grade level garden activities are tied to the Massachusetts Educational Framework. The garden program typically stipends two individuals, a garden coordinator who oversees all, all garden activities and a garden care coordinator. The garden coordinator is also the liaison to the teachers in assists in scheduling time, lesson planning and procuring any necessary items for planning or other garden-based activities. The second stipended position is the garden care coordinator. They oversee the garden's day-to-day maintenance. The school's PTO funds the two stipend positions under their cultural enrichment budgets. Before closing the Bell School for reconstruction, the school had 100% teacher participation and the garden was the school's largest cultural enrichment program. Over the six years the garden was in use, the activities evolved with the teachers' needs. Food production, this is the key piece to get the lead point. We need to have food production. Food production, composting, science experimentation and journaling were everyday activities performed in the garden. The garden was used as a performance space, yoga studio, as well as an outdoor classroom. During the new school's design phase, the garden was included as part of the scope. Teachers, parents and administrators provided programming guidance to the design professionals so that the garden would be built to emulate the original garden's design and would be able to be used by teachers and students in a similar but expanded fashion. The parents, teachers and administrators also looked to the more extensive food production program at the new school as the new school has a large commercial kitchen. The commercial kitchen will allow harvested food to be cleaned and consumed onsite by the students. All other food harvested will be donated to the summer, uh, summer care volunteers as the garden has done throughout its tenure. As the superintendent for Marblehead Schools, we will make at least a three-year commitment to the continuing of the garden program. That's a stipulation, that time period to get the lead point. It's required to, to commit to three years. Significant funds are earmarked, another requirement, for getting the garden rebuilt and the district fully intends to support this ongoing program. Those earmarked fa- fa- funds are already embedded in the building project. It's not a school budget thing.
Yeah, because that was my concern is that I just, do we need to, do we need to state that? Or is that?
It's already paid for. It's already been voted. I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And does it, because the building project is called by the NSBA, the Elbridge Gary School Building Project, the use of Bell, is that, is it, is it kosher throughout?
I think the reason for the Bell Organic Garden is the way the accounts were first set up, they had their own accounts that self-funded these programs and there was connections to that. I don't think it's in any way, shape or form mandating that we're calling it that and/or mandating that we would even name the garden that. I can't see why we wouldn't name the garden that, but, but i- it's not at all linking us to that. It's, it's meeting these lead points essentially. And this doesn't, this isn't um, this doesn't go to any like governing body in Marblehead that names anything. It's, it's just the lead certification board.
All right. Any other questions on that? Hope it doesn't kick us all out again. All right, okay. As long as, I think, I think it answered, that answered my questions on it. So are you comfortable with it?
The only question I had was about the Bell School. Or weekly updates says Elbridge Gary. And I didn't know if that would have any impact on the lead certification calling it, but I did.
I, I mean, I, I suppose Sarah, can you hear me?
Yeah, a little.
In the first um, in the first paragraph at the beginning, the letter for the history and the future commitment to, we could say to an organic garden at the new school. Because then the rest of the letter talks about the history. So I suppose we could just make it future commitment to the organic garden at the new school.
Yeah, we could just say um, a future commitment to the organic garden program.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree, right. Edit that out, John. I think that's fine.
Okay. And then the last, I think, as the superintendent for Marblehead Schools, it should be I instead of we. Make at least a three-year commitment.
Yeah.
Garden program.
Yeah.
You guys are comfortable with that? I can put it on Letterhead and send it out.
Wonderful. All right, great. Thank you, John. Okay, so very briefly, um, I need a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purpose. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Massachusetts, or sorry, the Marblehead Education Association, Unit A.
I had one other correspondent. I think we should enter in that correspondence of the letter we received about the pool testing under correspondence.
Which letter?
We received in our email that letter that was talked about during public comment regarding pool testing. It was signed by, I think, 90, 90 people.
Okay. Can I get a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purpose. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Marblehead Education Association, Unit A. Megan moved. Emily second. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris.
Yes.
Emily Baron. Megan Taylor.
Yes.
Sarah Fox.
Yes.
All right, I will now ask everyone, um, but the school committee and the superintendent to leave the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Well, um, 10.
41.
Is this quick or should we take a minute to use the restroom? Okay.
I promise.
For the minutes we have everyone.